Um, I agree with Patty. Like, I think it, and it should just be like, um, you know, af- after a site visit, if there's a school not implementing their education program, it probably should just be kind of, and it should just be like a pretty standard letter that's like, we have, we have been notified by CSD that you're not implementing one or more. It doesn't even have to be like, and then, please have this, you know, please work with CSD to have this rectified by the end of the school year, whatever. It can be pretty simple to be able to do this, and that way it can then be followed up um, and easily figured out whether it's green or yellow in this case. Um, the only other thing I was thinking is, um, I was, I'm, I'm wondering, because I, I do agree, I think, I, the, the subjectivity is, but is with fully, which is so frustrating, because I do think like, I, I actually like the way that this is done. I, I'm struggling with putting two or more as red, or yeah, that is two or more, because, and I'm just like throwing that out there, so, you know, if we're not careful, there could be part of the ed program that's like significant. Um, like it's in the title of the school, and that they do this specific thing in their ed program, and if they're not doing that one thing, that could be massive. I mean, it could be a huge, like, it sh- it could be a red. But there's some parts of ed programs that are a little bit less, maybe, you know, like smaller pieces. So I, I'm, I'm concerned with, I think number one is we have to like really look at ed programming being negotiated differently, to where we're not, like, i- it's, what's in there can be provided evidence of. Um, because if it's, if it's like, oh, we do holistic learning, or what, you know, I don't know, like, if we do, we do S E L, and, but if it's not more specific, it could be more, that's where I think it could be challenging to get to the fully implemented versus not implemented. I feel like this could be figured out through the contract negotiation and not necessarily here, because I actually do like the way this is outlined. Um, and I'm just wondering if we can do the ed programming language in the contract to where it is specific to what evidence needs to be provided to show that it's being fully implemented, or like, it just becomes more specific um, in that space? Because I like the levels that are here, and I'm concerned about making it to where there, you know, because some, I, and I've also seen some ed programs that take up a full page of a contract, and I've seen some ed programs that are a little paragraph. So like, if it's one or more, and so two, and they only had four pieces of their ed program, but this other school put twenty-five pieces of their ed program. It's, I, I'm struggling with that part of it, so I'm wondering if that's where the like, taking away some of the subjectivity could come from, is by making it better in the contract of what their ed program looks like. Um, like, what exactly is going to be reviewed to show that they're following their ed program? Or something along those lines, but I'm struggling, that's what I am struggling with in, in looking at that.
Okay, uh, Wayne, and then Karina.
Yeah, um, when we started collecting our data from the directors, the confusion that they had is they're like, well, uh, and the way this says is academic program, isn't the academic program already um, being looked at through the testing? And looking at that data, and then the mission specific goals are already looked at, so um, th- they saw this as being redundant, and saying that, well, why does this even need to be in there? If you're already looking at your mission-specific goals, which is the academic program of the school, are those mission-specific goals, and then you're already looking at the um, the testing data that the state is already providing and/or your own testing data. So wh- why is this um, important, and why should this be in there?
So I don't want to talk about a particular school, but I could, because um, I, and I actually think, I, I, I kind of like that comment about academic versus educational program. Maybe it should be educational program, because um, let's just say there's a school that um, has a math approach that is um, unique and different, maybe, and then they have um, a language program that uses a six-trait writing skills. Okay, some have defined it that specifically, and then maybe they have a component of their program, their educational program, where they take kids outside and give them hands-on learning, and then maybe they also have a component where they are um, tying their um, school to a community effort or engaging community, either pushing in or pushing out, but those are all very different um, components of an educational program. And so I would say that, A, if you're proposing it, and that's how come you were approved as a charter school, um, I really love what uh, Vice Chair Burt said about during contract negotiations, getting really specific about what are those components? It should be tied to what's in the application. Um, and, and it should be outlined, and they should tell us what is the evidence that we would see. Um, and again, I guess the only thing I'm really struggling with um, is the timeframe, because I'm looking at the site visit schedule, and with fifty um, eight charter schools slated to be visited this year, we have some visits in May. So how timely can we be in notifying the P E C and then expecting the P E C to notify the schools? Um, and give feedback that way. Um, I think that the resolve before the end of the school year part of that component is, it feels challenging to me. Um, and so I, I would like for us to have a further discussion about that.
So uh, would you uh, suggest or recommend then taking the word uh, academic out and uh, put uh, education program?
I, I would.
That's what it's titled.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Missy, I saw your hand up.
Instantaneously.
Okay.
Okay, so um, if that is, you know, I um, I guess, I guess that will require schools to amend their charter contracts if they feel like their acad- their educational program is not illustrated correctly, is that, is that what I'm hearing, so that, so that it's an accurate portrayal, if that's where this is gonna lie?
So can I ask?
I think.
I would say that would only apply to the schools who already did theirs last year, and if they move over to this one. But I would say going forward, um, part of the worksheet in contract negotiations was, what is your ed program? And uh, we actually had someone like review that with the school, like, talk to them about it, like, this need, maybe this needs more. So I think it can be done, I think we can use what's already being done. And like, for me, what, if we're looking at rating it and making it part of this, just take it up that notch to where it's, um, you know, this, and I think Karina's example was so great, because I do, that's what I see, you know, I think an ed program is the promise that the school's making to the families that are choosing it. And so if you're gonna tell me that I have this, this, and this as part of the education plan for your student, but I'm only gonna do three of the four things, and I'm just gonna kind of skate, not do this other thing, then that's where I'm, that's, that's what I think this is looking at, this is what it's trying to accomplish. So I do think it could be really easily changed into where it's ed program, um, piece one, or, or section one, evidenced by, and then the school lists the evidence, like, that they're going to show CSD at the site visit. Um, education program, section two, evidenced by, and the school can propose those things, and that way, once again, it's in the contract, it's clear to the school, it's clear to CSD. Um, they can have the back and forth, but right between um, what it, what it looks like, and have those negotiate, just as they do with every other indicator. I mean, it, it then becomes where it's like, every other indicator a school can say, oh, we don't agree with what CSD's saying, and they can go through that before it gets actually finalized with CSD. But um, I think where I'm also, so now my only, like, struggle with this would be that full, which was from my, like, I was worried about this at the beginning, is the being finished by the end of the school year, just because of that, like, when, you know, some schools might find out really early on. And I also do believe there could be schools who may put that in their ed program, and then they're not, maybe they're not following it, but it's not intentional. They're not doing it intentionally, it's not, it's unintentional, but um, they do need to be, have that conversation at some point, but for some schools to get it earlier in the year than others, that's the fairness piece that I'm concerned by.
So I, I have two comments if I, if I can, so um, one is, I, I wanna, I'm gonna go back to the fully, because I want you to really grapple with this. Um, I'm gonna give a hypothetical, a school says, we're doing the IB program. They are, they have some IB classes, however, no one's getting an ID, IB diploma. So you may say, well, you're not fully implementing the program. Um, but you might actually want to be able to say, you're not at all implementing this program, because you've promised families IB diplomas, and you're only giving a couple courses. And the school can come back and say, but we are partially implementing it, it's just not fully. So you've left this gray area, and I'm trying to tighten this so that you don't have that. And that would be a place where I don't want to see you uh, three years from now, negotiating with the school where you're saying you'd not meeting, and they're saying, well, we kind of are, because we're doing parts of what we said we would do. Um, so that's what I'm.
Yeah, could we use that example? So what I would say, if that, that, that should be negotiated in their contract, so they would say, IB program is part of our thing, and so the evidence by would either be the agree to with the P C that it's classes provided, or degrees being given.
So my only pushback would be, I don't know if in the contract you would, you as the CSD or P C negotiator would even can, would be thinking about the difference between diploma and courses in that moment. It, it comes in later, that you don't, you don't anticipate things that could happen when a school uh, changes their, their focus um, necessarily, right? So it just, you just have to be really careful um, in that you were putting a lot of now into another place for extreme clarity. Um, and I, I wanna just highlight that. The second thing I wanted um, to say was around the timeframe, and also this, I think there's a little confusion, well, I am confused, between with these notifications by P E C and CSD. What I think I might have heard, and what I'm wondering, is if there is this green is, is CSD notifies the school, CSD, not P E C, and the school addresses it, and it never goes before P E C. And yellow is sort of, and, and maybe it's thirty days, or, you know, you give this sort of timeframe. Now, I know that the, in Karina, it's, do you need longer? So ninety days or something, and if your review is in May, they have, I want a timeframe, so that you're not, so maybe it's not end of the school year, maybe it's ninety days after the review, so it could be the start of the next school year. But I do feel like you need to give them time, and that time, because they didn't realize you did reviews as late as May, need to give that school the opportunity to change. But that's gonna be complicated when this is an annual review.
Commissioner Gibson, then, then Karina.
So I'm just wondering if we could put language in there that it's prior to the close of the annual report. Because that would give the school more than enough time, because, you know, that I think gives, I hope, enough flexibility to the charter school division. It gives enough flexibility to the school, because it's not the end of the school year, it's by the closeout of the annual report, so that there's um, there's more time in there. I struggle with, with fully, um, because we've seen, I've, I've gone through not quite as many directors as I have cabinet secretaries, but we're getting close.
Yeah, look at me.
So, you know, I, I get concerned with the, with the term fully, because there is that subjectivity there. Um, and I get it, I mean, contract negotiations, and I agree, there are contracts where the ed programming isn't that well outlined, but that was by design of the school. It's like you, you can't get blood out of a rock, so that if a school comes and they, you know, this is what, you know, this is what we, we want, okay, but then, you know, they have to take the consequences of it as well later on. But I, I do get concerned with um, with keeping the term fully in there. Um, and that's my only, um, that's my only, and I'll, and I'll throw out there, um, if by the close of the annual report would be um, sufficient.
So I would say that um, in the past, we weren't looking at contracts and providing feedback to the schools very systematically, in the way that I would say that we have been last year and this year. We have dinged, if you will, some schools whose contracts say that they're doing something in the educational program that they are actually not doing. And it doesn't feel good, but it has opened some eyes, and people have responded appropriately, or at least they should be. Um, in my opinion, schools should be implementing what they promise at any given time, and adding a complication for reporting thirty days, sixty days, P E C getting involved in the notification. That whole business is really making this complex, and I know where it comes from, it comes from a good place, because we do this with some compliance indicators. For example, if a school has a teacher that doesn't have a license in place, we give them until, you know, the end of the school year to resolve the licensure discrepancy. Um, and, and, and that's easy for us to track, because there is a systematic way that the PED is collecting that data from schools, and then it being reported out, and we can access it very easily by looking at that report. If we keep it like this, it, it would mean that my staff might, because this is tied to an onsite visit, it would mean that my school would have, uh, my staff would need to go back to each school whose educational program is not fully implemented, I'm using that word, um, to check. And it also, um, and so I think that that, that that is an extra, I don't know, two or three, four layers for my team, that in, in my opinion, um, makes this one complicated. And I would ask the commission to think about allowing us to look at the contract, look for evidence onsite of implementation of the terms of the contract, and report back to you, report to the school, certainly, but at the time of the visit, gauge the indicator rating, and next year they can go, they can go from, you know, red to next year being green. And I think we'll see that, and I think we should take that into consideration at renewal, in my opinion. Um, contextual understanding of what's going on at the school, continuous improvement of what's going on at the school matters. But I think that this one is written in a complicated way, that I would ask the commission to reconsider.
Vice Chair Burt, then Commissioner Gibson, then Missy.
Um, I actually like what Naomi said, um, the suggestion to um, have it to where, actually, no, I don't know if it was named, I mean, so that, but to where like green is that CSD, because I do think it's still like, Karina and I have had these conversations, how it's like, kind of still awkward and a little weird when CSD goes and does a site visit, and the school is doing something not, like, they're not doing something right, like, they're, they're not following their contract in some way, but they do correct, like, they end up correcting it. Um, but it still just doesn't get documented anywhere, there's nothing, like, they kind of just get to move on past it, and so if they do it again, there's like no record, that that's like a continual issue. And so I like the idea of, of allowing for green to be that CSD talked to them, and they fixed it. Um, but, and that is just CSD, CSD had a conversation with them, but that way it's just like a documented thing of like, they weren't following it, and, but they corrected it. Or I actually think, and I don't know how this would be perceived, but I'm wondering if there's no blue for this. So that green is that they're fully implementing it, that CSD didn't have to go and tell them that they're not following their ed program. Um, yellow would be that CSD, when they saw that they're not following their ed program and they fixed it, then the third one would be that, the red is that they're not following it, and they're not, and they didn't fix it. And that, at that point, P E C then has like the leverage ability and data to support, like, taking action on it. Um, I just don't, because I'm just trying to figure out how to make this into four categories. I think that's what, like, my brain keeps trying to figure out, like, and I can't figure out the four categories, and I just don't know if it's like, if there's a way to do their ed program exceptionally. Um, because I feel like if they're following their ed program, they're just doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, so I, that's where, I, maybe that's where I'm kind of coming up with that, and that, because that's also a, a yellow feels better of being like, you weren't following it. Like, there was a time period in which your kids were not getting the programming that you said you were going to give to them, that happened. Did you fix it? Yes, great, like, but that's still like, you should never not be following your ed program. Like, you, I don't know if that's a, a green to be like, yeah, they didn't follow it for six months of the school year, but they fixed it. Um, but it still was like, yeah, they didn't follow it for a period of time, and maybe it's a short period of time, maybe it's longer before CSD can get to them, but that to me makes more sense to still allow for the levels. And maybe someone has a creative idea for a blue, like, maybe those could be green, yellow, red, because that feels better, but, and maybe blue, something like, they're implementing their ed program plus extra, I don't know. Like, they show evidence that they're doing extra above and beyond their ed programming. I don't know, but um, that's, that's kind of where I'm going, and I do, I like, um, I think, you know, that would give less burden to CSD, because then they're still just doing their job, they're communicating with the schools. If they're doing their ed programming, great, that's a green. If they're yellow, then that means that CSD spoke to them that they weren't following it, they fixed it. But then red is that P E C somehow needs to get involved, which is really what red kind of indicates for a lot of our indicators, is that, that's a place where P E C would consider getting involved in, based off of the annual report.
I put my hand up because I want, I, but I wanted to acknowledge you next, Commissioner Gibson, and then, and then Missy.
Thanks, so, and I agree by and large, I think if a school has, I think we have to give the forgiveness, um, I mean, we get new head administrators, and they may not be, you know, fully on board all the time, so that it takes a while for them to get to know their contracts, so that there has to be that level of authority for the charter school division and the school to fix it within a reasonable amount of time, and not have to come to us. And it's, it's a level of concern, we cannot wait until renewal, and for a report to come out and say, oh, but you know, we talked with them three years in a row that they didn't, um, they weren't implementing this, and they didn't do that. Think of it, if the school does not provide evidence to the charter school division that they're, they've, you know, they're now implementing what was noted they were not, uh, I think that has to come to us, because these are material terms of their contract. So these are the elements that we cannot, that we could revoke a contract for, so that we can't, and also non-renew, but if we bring this up at renewal, and they say, well, you know, you didn't talk to us for three years, so why are you interested in it now? But I, I do agree that there's got to be some time that we don't have to get involved, that there's, charter school division and the school can work out and fix it, but that if they, if there's evidence that they didn't fix it, and that's why I thought by the end of the, you know, the closeout of that annual report, they would be able to provide that evidence. Doesn't have to come to us before then, um, as a concern, only when they haven't done it, then it comes to us as a concern.
Missy.
I just wanted to say that um, Dylan Wilson and I have been promoting the idea that boards should have an annual end-of-year report from their head administrator on have we fulfilled the requirements of our charter contract, including specifically our educational program, how successful have we been? So I don't know if that would be something, it would not, nobody would be able to earn a blue for a while, but that could be something that we monitor through their meeting minutes, um, to see that the board is observing that. Um, that to me is one of the main functions of the board, they should be ensuring the charter contract every year of the term, and um, getting reports on, on that, and, and, and it, it shouldn't be something that's coming from, we shouldn't be the ones reminding them, they should have the data for us.
Yeah, thank you all. I, I, I am, I'm tending to agree with the, the, what, what uh, Vice Chair Burke mentioned, like, having a three kind of step thing. I actually started going into a similar process, where I was thinking, this is kind of like a, no, you either are doing it or you don't.
Yeah.
Based on just, you're either doing your material terms, or you're not. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't think green and red is probably, like, we would do with some of the organizational frameworks is the right path, but I, I started leaning towards that, just because these are things that are like, you know, if you are a bilingual school, you're supposed to teach two languages certain periods of time, and that might way not be a goal in the mission-specific goals, you know, that, I could see a world where maybe that's not a mission-specific indicator goal that a school decides on, but it's still part of their material, material terms, you know? Um, or if you imagine a school, that's an outdoor education school, um, but maybe there's like, not a goal around that, but that's inherently part of that school's uh, model, that I could see that, this is where this could kind of like, capture that, you know, in some ways. So, so I, I, I like the green, yellow, red model here. I think it's better than where I was going with either you know it, or you're doing it, or you don't, because there's not a chance to, to improve, and I feel like we have to have an improvement, an improvement heart uh, a little bit to some degree, with, with how we think about this framework as well. So we see an issue, it raises the alarms with CSD, and then it's, it's corrected, I think there's something about that, that we should give value to, and so I, I like the idea of having this green, yellow, red. I'm not as good with the language around fully or not, but I, I, I feel like the, without that in there, I feel like this, 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 this works a little bit more for me, um, for sure. So anyhow, I just wanted to share a little bit of my, my thoughts.
Yeah, uh, and the yellow, where the lessons not, not implemented, and the school subsequently resolved the issues. I think that's where the big problems coming in, is like, how do we know if they resolve those issues? And unless it is in the end-of-the-year uh, evaluation by the board, and then that becomes a problem too, because all boards then have their own evaluation system, then that would have to be a uniform evaluation system that all schools are giving their board. So that would be a problem, so I'm, I would almost think that that just needs to be taken out, that, that was not implemented, and then just leave it at that. And because how, how are we going to know, or how are you guys gonna know that that was, that was uh, resolved? I, I don't see how that is ever going to be figured out during that school year. You would have to wait until the next school year to find out if that was resolved.
It, it sounds like you're then agreeing with the chair, just have it be green and red.
Yes, looking at this, it would almost make more sense to just have green or red, either you're doing it or you're not. And you're either following what your charter says, you're following, uh, you know, it will say that outdoor education plan, and you go in there and you, you're, because it is making it very difficult on everybody to um, uh, now show how, how are you, how, you're, you're now putting that pressure on the director and everybody to report back to the P E C or somebody to say, yes, this is how we resolve this, and, and if, I, I would hope there wouldn't be that many schools in this situation, but I do know that sometimes there are.
So, so if I may, W- Wayne, are you saying just have indicators green or red, or that each element is either yes or no? So that there could be a yellow, for example, if a school said they would do five things, and they're doing three, wouldn't that be a yellow for that year? And what you're really saying is that you don't think we need to return back during the school year to see if it's resolved by the end of the school year, because at any given point, a school should be doing what it said it's going to do, and we don't need to return to see if it finally is, we will next year, and they have the opportunity to get a different color at that point. But it seems like you're either doing all of those five things, or maybe you're doing three, or maybe you're doing two, or one, and that would be the red. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I hadn't really thought of it that way, that you would break everything down, and then, you, you know, because then that would create a whole different template that would, we would have to use to figure all that out. Um, I just don't like that it says, um,
I just don't like that it says, um, that the school subsequently resolved the issues. I, I just don't.
Within the school year, right? So you're saying there shouldn't have to be a return back to the school before the end of the school year to see something that was maybe quickly put together in the month of May, if we had a visit in April. I think that that seems fair. And I would say remove the language about the notification and, and end of the school year res- resolution, because the notification is the rating on the, on the performance framework, right? And we are telling them onsite when we're there, but that, that is the rating that year. It, it's not like a resolution at the end of the school year.
So you're going back to green or red? Cause the only difference between.
No, because you can have five indicate, five elements in your educational program. And maybe you're implementing four, but not one. That would be a yellow, I believe, right?
But I guess, I guess what happens, uh, Karina, in that, in that scenario, like if a school picked five and they said, this is what we're about. This is our, this is our uniqueness, our innovation. This is what we're providing to the community of, of learners and our community at large, but we decided not to do one. Is that, is that okay when we said that like that you're going to do all those? And, um, and these are not like little tic tac things. These are the things that like we said we were going to do as a school. And so that's why I've started getting into that binary, just like you said, you're going to have a clean audit. You know, um, or maybe that's not a good example, because there's some gray in there, but like there's, there's that, that's why I was thinking like, how are we going to decide? Like if one of those things was not significant enough to be like, you know, that's a, that's a good yellow.
No, well, so it reads that one. I would change it maybe to say one or two. I, I, I don't know about the nu- the number, but I think the number matters. Because, um, having worked with schools from the stage of it's a great idea to implementing, uh, you know, and, and we do hold the capacity interviews, right? So there is this capacity understanding that schools need to have, and they're not going to, um, have a, a, a full program in year one. They're not. And so a smart school would maybe phase in program A. Um, be reasonable about what they can do B. But three should be expected to do what they say they're going to do. And if they're doing most of what they said they're going to do, but not all of it, then I do think that that's a yellow. And I, I, I do think that, um, if the majority of what they said they're doing, they're not doing, um, that is a red. So I, I do, I like green, yellow, red. I do think that, you know, if their scope of what they're going to do is many and they're short on one, I don't know that that's a red.
Commissioner Beck, then Chair, Vice Chair Burke, then Commissioner Gibson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of going back and you gotta remember, I'm really new at this. So I've been here for a month, so I might not understand all the, how this all works together. But it would make sense to me from my previous world that the yellow makes sense if we have a time period of which they are allowed, kind of like what Commissioner Gibson said, a time period that they're allowed in order to resolve the issue. They had an issue, C S D figured it out, told them. And I don't know, ninety school days. Um, you know, so that you don't have to do it at the end of the school year. If the issue was found in April, that you would have till October or September of the next school year. But it makes sense to me that there is a yellow for finding something within the educational program that they were not doing. But yet they came back with an, uh, and I don't know, again, I don't know if eighty percent of the schools um, aren't fa- don't follow, or ta- I, I don't know if this is a huge problem or a very small problem. Uh, but my, my assumption is it's a somewhat small problem. Most of the schools do, uh, uh, implement their educational program. So it wouldn't be in my, and I'm, again, Karina, I'm outside of my realm here. But i- it doesn't seem to me overbearing that if you gave them, for example, ninety school days to resolve that problem, that they could go back and the evidence would be there that they resolved it. And then that would be yellow for their annual report. I mean, I don't know if that makes sense.
So if I may, since you asked, um, if we were Albuquerque Public Schools, this would be feasible, right? Because you're down the street, you're maybe ten, fifteen minutes away. But to go back to Silver City, which is a how many hour drive? Um, or to go to Gallup, or to go to Taos and Red River before the end of the school year, when already our site visits are scheduled out through the month of May. I am saying that I think we need to get rid of a, you can resolve it before the end of the year. We can start out with a lot of contextual understanding. We're not going to close the school if they aren't doing it. Um, necessarily, um, but if they get a yellow or they get a red, next year they better get something else. And I, and I think it just is what it is at the time of the site visit. And I would ask, I would beg the P E C members to consider eliminating the resolution before the end of the school year.
But that's, that's, that's what I was wondering is if it was like a ninety or a hundred and twenty day deal, which would go from the, from May till like November to look at it. Would that, would that not?
But, no, because already A, there's so many trackers and B, um, this is adding, this is adding an extra site visit, could be to Los Cruces, again, Taos or someplace else.
Director Chavez, what if it didn't? Let's just change the paradigm. What if taking the comment from Missy saying, what if you got a board assurance that they have dealt with it? Then the next year you go and if you don't see it, I mean, we, there is, think back to the stool, right? So you've got the authorized of the school board that has a role and the school. And if you've notified the board that there is an element of the school that they're not doing, and the board assures you at some point that they have addressed it. If you're not seeing it the next year, okay, that assurance you know, was, was in question, but I don't think you have to go back. I think that that, take that away. I never imagined you visiting again. I think there's got to be some level of assurance that, that you are trusting that school board to do its job. And the school leadership to do theirs, because you're, you know, we're not a, we're not a school system.
It's another tracker, tracker for the school year when we already have caps and multiple caps and many other things that we're doing. And so I can tell you that we're going to have a tracker that says, did we get the assurance from the school board? Yes, no, oh, we sent it, we didn't, uh, it, it just, to me, it's like, we see it when we're there or we don't. So, and when we see it, it's either green, yellow or red, and that's it. And remove the, they resolve it before the end of the school year. And, and not close any schools if they get yellows, right? We're not going to go after the schools and close them. I think a yellow, we already established that a yellow is not a bad thing. Um, and if nobody is reading their charter contract and they aren't implementing, um, both, maybe, maybe we change the language around multiple elements in the school's educational program to be the red. That, that seems fair, but I, I do think this back and forth be in, before the end of the school year on this one to fix it. I would ask you to eliminate that part of this indicator.
Vice Chair Burke and then Commissioner Gibson.
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm still, I, I really like where it's at. Um, and what I'll say is, I think, um, once again, I, I think this incentivizes a school to fix it quickly. I mean, I'm, I'm really concerned about being like, oh, you're just not following grad program. All right. We'll see you next year. Um, and see if you do it two years in a row. Um, I think this allows the opportunity for a school to take feedback from C S D. I don't think C S D should do another site visit. I'm ideally, this is like, the school can email, like, I mean, it doesn't have to be. I can't imagine it being another site visit. Um, but is it a conversation back and forth again now? Like, once again, I see this as just like all the other indicators. The C S D is going to say, hey, we have you as, um, as a red right now, because you're not implementing this. Um, and I also think it shouldn't be by the end of the school year either. I do think it's by the end of, um, or by the time, it's what Commissioner Gibson said. Um, by the close of site visits, I thi- I can't remember how she said it.
Annual report.
By the, yeah, by the annual report. And I mean, it could be a date, like whatever the date is, like let the school know, like we're, we're expecting to have annual reports done this year by November. You know, please provide, you know, send us evidence that you're now implementing this. Just as if you would, if you did any of the financial organizational indicators, right? Like, um, that's what happens. You're like that, okay, this is what your preliminary report says. You show us that it's something other than that now. And I just like the idea of giving the yellow, the opportunity for the school to correct it. I do think the ed program is not a small thing. It's not, um, get, not getting their board members trained. It's not, you know, oh, you're just not doing it. Um, we'll ta- we'll, like, I don't like the idea of like, oh, we'll just see next year if you're doing it by now. And I, but I don't think it has to be like this overly burdensome thing. But it should be something that is significant enough to be followed up on. Um, I'm really worried about it just being like these, a year after year thing, because we're not, like, I just think this incentivizes a school to, once again, and the onus is on, going to be on the school. So the school is told by C S D during the site visit or during the preliminary report, we did not observe you per, doing this part of the, um, ed program. Change, fix it, you know, and so then the school need, then the onus goes on to the school. It does stay red. Unless the school provides evidence, otherwise it does stay red. And so, once again, if we had it, if we had in a, a information system, some digital, some software that I would allow for this back and forth communication with between C S D and a school on our performance framework, it could be something that's done digitally. Um, and not belabored and, but this is important. This is a really important thing, and I don't think it should be, oh, just one thing, you're a yellow. No, like, one thing is a red. Like to me, I'm, I'm, I'm don't, I will never support it being multiple parts of your ed program are a red. It, like one part to me is a red. Like if you don't have that part and you're not going to do it, that's a red. Like that's, you, you don't, you can't do that as a school. So that's kind of where I'm standing with it is, and actually, I don't know if it was Missy, I, I thought Missy was saying that like for blue, it would be that the board provides certification that they're monitoring this as well, which I actually love. Cause it, once again, I'm about incentives for folks doing the right thing, like for doing the, the, yeah, to do the, the right thing and not, it's not like I'd rather incentivize the right thing. So I'd be totally open to like a blue indicator in which the governing board shows that they are, um, monitoring the ed program or something like that, just so that, once again, there's like engagement from the board and that's incentivized. If they don't do it, which I guess they should be doing, but if they don't do it, it's not like they're penalized, but if they are, what a great incentive to get a blue.
Commissioner Gibson, then Commissioner Ingham, and then Director Chavez.
Thanks. I'm going to start with two words, epicenter. So, um, I, I think a lot of this can be done. Uh, I never, I never envisioned another site visit. I think it would have to be something that was so egregious that we asked for as a commission, the site visit to show, because we didn't, um, I hate to use the word trust, the, you know, the information that was coming forward. Uh, Wayne, in your world, we'd be sending out a boatload of letters because you're either doing it or you're not. And there's no middle ground, and I think there has to be that middle ground in there. Um, so that schools aren't just getting these nasty grams all the time because you're not doing it. But if we use the example that the chair used with the bilingual program, I'm not willing to wait until the next year to show that, because they could also be getting funding for that. So that there could be multiple things that are going wrong with that. So that, you know, the ed program is something that is crucially important to the operation of the school and a successful operation of the school. So that, um, I'm more than comfortable with giving the school the time to try to fix it before, you know, we step in and put our thumb down and say, no, you know, here's a letter from us. I think we, we owe them that because there are many, many different reasons why something wasn't implemented. But I'm also not willing to let it go until the, the next annual report to say, you know, now, now this is two years in a row that, uh, I can't allow that. But I think there's more than opportunity for schools to communicate that evidence back without, um, with a minimal amount of burden and certainly not an additional, uh, site visit. Um, so I'm, I, I want to keep with the three.
Commissioner Ingham, then, uh, Director Chavez.
Um, I think I'm agreeing with everybody. Um, it just seems overly complicated. Um, it seems like if, if, if C S D has found a, um, a place where they're not um, satisfying their own conditions, then they're automatically a yellow. They have ninety days to respond and, and P E C gets notified when somebody gets a yellow. And then they, they have ninety days to respond. And then if they don't respond, they automatically go to red. And if they don't intend to respond, then they're red right away. But it just seems really simple to me to, just, they have ninety days to respond. The onus is on the school, not on C S D to, and, and really not to even interpret their, but the, that, that school has ninety days to respond and how they are going to implement that. It, the fact that it might take a little while to implement it, that's probably going to be always the case. But they need to have a plan within ninety days. Thanks.
Uh, Director Chavez, then Naomi. Yeah, go ahead, Missy.
So you know, you have a way for schools to amend or change their educational program? Okay. So there could be some schools that do that. But I also feel like if we've rated them one year as a yellow or red, even if, even if the board gives an assurance that they've done it, or, or especially if they've done, given an assurance, the next site visit, we still don't see the evidence. Does that not mean that the P E C can call the school to a meeting and ask them to explain? Or would that just be, you need to re- adopt, you need to come up with a proposal of what an ed program is that you will follow?
So I want to be very careful that we are talking about here as an annual report and indicator. At the beginning of this discussion, we talked about how the, 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 the si- the level that they're going to give, whether it's, you know, uh, uh, expedited review or expedite renewal, you know, what, what's their, what's their track? I think that it makes sense for all indicators perhaps to add something about if, if they are uh, a red in any indicator for two or more years, something like that, that that would allow for the commission to, to talk to them. And of course, a commission can talk to any school at any time. Remember, this is an academic indicator. So if they get a yellow, they're not getting a renewal with a, a recommendation without conditions. Um, so I think that there is always a moment to talk to the, all the schools that are not on track. Um, so there's, there's a lot of things outside the framework. The framework is a notification, a public notification to the school on how you're doing that year. So.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I'm going to say for me, if a school's not implementing their ed programming, the, for me, the conversation isn't, well, now you need to amend it to get rid of that, because that's not the solution to the, to the problem. Unless they can truly demonstrate that, you know, we have full intention of doing this, but it, it is beyond our means to be able to, to do this, either through, you know, you're in a rural area and you just can't staff it. I get that, but an answer to, we didn't do this is, oh, we're going to take, we're going to amend our contract and take it out. That's not an appropriate response.
Yeah. And I just want to, I thank you, Commissioner Gibson for that. And Naomi, uh, whispered to me a couple of minutes ago that there could be an unintended, unintended consequence here, uh, based on what I shared, which is, you know, we. that there could be an unintended, unintended consequence here, uh, based on what I share, which is, you know, we, we should be focusing in on, um, you know, these ed program el- elements are what makes our schools their schools, and that's where innovation happens. If we get to a little bit too strict here, maybe some of our char- charter schools will be like, well, I only want like one stinking education program, you know, like a change, we, we, it's a habit change that we could potentially see. And so I've been gnawing on that, Naomi, since you, you whispered that to me about, like, how can we do this in a good way where it doesn't, it doesn't like, kind of take away the, the, the beauty of what we have in charter schools here in New Mexico, which is there is a deep sense of innovation and um, independence and, uh, an ability to, to provide something that to a community that wouldn't necessarily be provided if it wasn't for that school. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm wondering how we can like, like, walk that razor's edge a little bit to like, make sure that we're seeing what we wanna see in terms of compliance with the full education, uh, program implementation, but at the same time, um, make sure that we're continuing to, to encourage, uh, good, good education philosophies that are, that are gonna be supporting schools as well. Wayne?
All right, thanks. I, I was right on the same wavelength as you, um. Uh, so, and I've heard this word over and over, is a unique educational program. And just, so charter schools know that this is what this is why they became a charter school, because they're offering something unique in their community, and that's what this is. So all elements of the unique educational program. Uh, and so then that, cause y- you don't want it to go to one, uh, why, why do we need a charter school if they're gonna be just like the, the district school? So, uh, I think if we can, uh, cause I think that clears up a little bit of, uh, just, um. It makes it more specific, cause that's what you want. You want, you want that unique, specific, uh, educational program that your school is offering. Uh, and that's what this educational program, I believe, is what we're all trying to say.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Burt.
And I think a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing at this point could also be clarified in the contract negotiation worksheet, like the leading up to contract negotiations and then putting it in. Like, if we can clarify it in there, what exactly we're looking for in the ed program. Um, cause I also, I, I understand the idea of like, if they're too specific, it doesn't allow them to pivot. Right? But then if they're like, if I can't pivot, then I'm gonna be super broad and like, it's not gonna be have any substance to it, because now you're rating it, so I'm gonna make sure, like, we don't want schools to play, like, play the game, right? Because it's a rating now. Um, but like what Wayne said, it is the, it's the, what makes the charter school unique? And once again, it's like, for me, it's as a mom, that's why I'm choosing a school. Is there ed program? Like, it's generally, that's why families are choosing schools, is the ed programming that the schools, um, proposing. So, um, that's why I just feel like it's so massively important. Um, but if they say they're going to do one, two, three, four items that make their school unique, that they're delivering on all four of those items. And when it comes to like amendments and things like that, what I've, and what should always be the case is that you are expected to follow every piece of it until the amendment's approved. Like, you don't get to just say, oh, we're going to amend it, or, and it's totally okay if they, like, like, the examples that were given, you know, if there's a change in which they can't follow it, they should submit an amendment. Like, that's the appropriate thing to do. Submit an amendment, change their ed program. Once it's approved, then you can then change your ed program. I think it's just like, sometimes schools get it backwards and they just start doing things first and then do the process second and it's just, there's an appropriate way to do it and, and tackle the issues. But I still, I just feel like we're, I like the way it's done now, but I would say, um, what Commissioner Ingham said with like, just putting it in ninety days might be a smart thing too, because that's, I, I, I mean, the reports, like, let's say they, uh, CSE goes to do a site visit in May, um. I mean, annual reports aren't coming out in the next ninety days anyway, but that gives them the summer to plan on improving that, that issue that was brought to their attention and implemented by the next school year. That's, that does seem like plenty of time. Even if it's at the end of the school year, and I don't think annual reports are gonna come out within ninety days of, of May. Like, that would be, that would be a, a massive, crazy, amazing turnaround, but probably unlikely. So it does feel like at the it's, it's more specific than by the time of the annual report. Ninety days is, is, uh, uh, and then it allows CSD to move on too. Like, if they don't have it by ninety days, they can move on and PEC, they could bring it to PEC, we could take action in the same year.
So I'm gonna, um, we're gonna start to wrap up this discussion, so, but, uh, so I, I think the ninety days makes sense. Um, what I'm wondering is, um, and now I've lost my train of thought. Uh, oh, I know, uh, Commissioner, um, and I'm sorry, Ingham, um, you, you mentioned that what they needed to produce in ninety days was a a report, like a sort of, a plan. Um, and what this is currently says is they've actually fixed the problem. You know, that they've actually done something different, and so I just wanted to get clarity on where we stand on that. If there's a, I'm trying to think of an example, like they're an arts infused school and they lost their art teacher, so they're not imp- it's like, I don't know, I don't know what these findings are that, that are, um, being found, but, you know, is a plan sufficient uh, to be put in yellow? Um, or is it, does it have to have evidence that it has been addressed and changed? That, that was the question.
From my standpoint, I, I just realized it seems like it, it would be almost impossible to, if you're, if you're missing a, a significant item on your, uh, that you're, you're supposed to be attending to. And it's brought to your attention, then, then a plan and a, um, is what I would be looking for in ninety days in, in my estimation. But then that implementation would have to be part of the plan and be presented to the PEC that this is how we're gonna respond. And if they, if they don't respond within the ninety days and they're automatically red, if they do respond within the ninety days and they come up with a plan that's appropriate, that we can agree is, is a reasonable accommodation, then, then they could go back to being green until they can get that plan established. But I can, I can imagine places where it would be very difficult to come up with a solution. Some things may be able to be solved really quickly, and I, uh, all the power to them. But, but I can imagine where there's ones that would, would be, you couldn't solve in ninety days. It's gonna take a school year to get it solved.
Commissioner Gibson, then, uh, Director Chavez.
I need more than a plan, uh, to, uh, to be sufficient for me, that the school, because the school either has to, um, take the steps to remedy this issue, or come and show us that they need to amend their contract because they're there's something that prohibits them from being able to fulfill this. Like, you know, like I said, it's impossible in the area that they're living that they're, they can't staff it, because there's literally no one to staff it. So we need to change our ed programming for that reason. But I think if we just wait for a plan, then there's, then there is gonna be another checkback that they're doing it. And if it's their ed programming, I'm not, I'm unwilling to give them a whole nother school year to show me that they, they actually did do it. I'm less comfortable with ninety days, only because I don't know, I don't think that's enough, I don't think that's enough time. I think if they're showing me by the start of the next school year that they've fixed it. You know, in some cases, that may only be thirty days, you know, depending on when the visit was. But if they start, because they've been able to have the conversation with their governance council, that they've created the plan, and now we're gonna implement it for the start of that new school year. Um, but, uh, you know, I'm not gonna die on that hill of ninety days, but I, I think that could be restrictive for some schools and, um, require too many touches afterwards if it's just that ninety days.
Director Chavez.
I thought it might be helpful for the commissioners to know how the schools rated in twenty-one, twenty-two, which, by the way, Naomi, we are finalizing those reports. It's taken a while. I really don't like um, the language, and thank you for changing it before the reports are completed. In fact, I, again, would ask you to consider removing any sort of timeline, but to let you know, um, under our current performance framework, we have something that says mission and educational program, which is where we're looking at what the mission statement says and the language in the charter contract for what the school promised it would do. And most of your portfolio has green, except for five schools, and the one school that has red is under a cap, FYI.
So what I'm hearing is that it's, uh, so it sounds like many people are meeting their education programming, uh, implementation right now. And so this would be, uh, this would, you know, hopefully support all schools to, to make, you know, to maneuver towards that direction.
That's right. And I think that maybe we consider something in the red about if they are not implementing, maybe that becomes the cap. Or that it comes to the PEC for immediate action, um, as a possibility. But I do like keeping red, green, yellow. Um, I do think most schools are doing this. They're doing what they said they were gonna do. Um, and I'm happy to note that the one that has a red has brought, has been brought to the attention of the PEC because it was so extreme. Um, and, um, I, I yeah, I would try to get rid of the, uh, assurances or the, within the school year.
So I guess I have a question. Does this need to be in your framework? You seem to be doing well. Your school seemed to be responding well. You have a process to notify PEC when not. Does this raise as a framework measure?
Yes.
Or have we complicated things so much?
No, I think that, I think it communicates to the schools that doing what they said they were gonna do is important. And I think it focuses attention both from my team and from the schools on what that language in the charter contract says. Um, it's just a matter of, I don't understand why we can't just rate it like we're rating everything else. Um, and if, and if I'm seeing something that I think is so extreme, I will bring it to the PEC, cause that is what I did last year before we had any complex language.
Yeah. And I would say, just to beat this horse to complete death, I, I would say, based on what we just talked about, like, having it here, it seems like it's working to make sure that we're keeping the uniqueness of our schools and, 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 and good ways, and it's, and it's been helpful. Um, and so I, I do think it plays a role here, um, in my opinion. And I, I do think we probably, just so we can kind of move on, if it's okay, cause we, I know we got a couple other indicators, I think, that we have to go through today. One more for academics, and I think we got a boatload of others to do in Oregon and, um, in financials, uh, but
We do have a question from one of the attendees. I don't know if you want.
Sure, uh. Yeah, you can bring Kimberly in.
Okay, Kimberly, I've given you the permission to talk.
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate you, uh, going through this and, and really hashing it out. And I'm sorry to go back, but I really need to go back to indicator one B. Um, and those of you who don't know, I'm sorry, I'm the director at Red River Valley Charter School. Um, one B, I'm just wondering how it's going to affect a small school like myself. I have sixty-eight kids, K through eighth. And right now, if my third grader is ten, my fourth is seven, my fifth is four, my seventh is seventh, my eighth is six. I'm not gonna make that ten, and I just wonder how that'll affect my school with this option.
So if you don't have it, if you don't have populations, it, it's a zero, I mean, it's like, it's, it's, it's not for you, it's not against you, right? So if there, if we can't, if they, the commission can't give you any points in this section, then it's just a, it's a nothing, it's an NA. So I could, we could add an NA is not enough insufficient data. Um, so in your case, you will only have the student group, all students. Um, I'm assuming that you might have a student group with male and a student group of female, but maybe not. Um, and, and, uh, but in, you probably don't have any of the other student groups, or perhaps you have a population student group and identification, if you're, if you're more of a homogeneous school. And those would be the only student groups that you'd be held responsible for, because you don't have enough, you don't have a minimum ten in the other groups. So just, it's, it's exactly the same way as it's handled in federal, uh, law, you know, it's, it's, when you in the day, you know, you're fewer than ten, you just have a dash or an NA for all of those student groups.
Is this option also including the special education group?
So it is all federally defined student groups. So yes, special education, multilingual learners, um, every race, uh, ethnicity and, um, gender.
Okay, so I would ask the, the commissioner to consider as well, like, we are, we attract a we attract a special ed popu- population for what reason or another, but we have forty percent of our kids in that group. So that one would be able to be seen more than likely. So then my question is, is that going to, you know, then I have my special ed that we're, we're working to get above a year's growth, you know, we wanna make sure that they're prepared for the following year. But then will that go, since we won't have any other data in those subgroups, is that going to be a problem for our school?
I don't know, I, I, so I'm just answering as a consultant here. I don't know that that would be considered. I don't know what you mean by a problem. So if you're doing well with your there's no penalty for not having students in a group and there, but, so that, me, but it, that puts the it's, it's, it puts the focus for you to be able to show your school's performance for the students who you serve. And if you have forty percent students with disabilities, yes, then that group will count. And yes, there would be an expectation that your program is designed to provide those students in particular with the, uh, necessary support so that they can have, uh, a, an academic year's growth.
Perfect. And who sets the growth target?
Depends which option you're choosing. And so we went over this, I don't know if you were on at the beginning, and I know all of this is recorded, but there are three options. Um, the first option is using the state assessment, and thereby the state would be choosing their growth, and you'd be held to the state growth target. Option two, um, you are held to that standard and supplemental. So not supplanting, but sup- supplementing with data that you would be providing as long as you've codified that in your charter agreement with the PEC. So you could choose an assessment that is correct, uh, to show the growth of your students. For example, in a school in Arizona, um, that I was working with before, that is a hundred percent students with autism, they had a special assessment that is designed to capture growth of autistic students that they were going to use in their charter, um, with their authorizer. So that would be something you would might wanna consider. Um, and then, uh, if you chose option three, and so, and that's supplemental, so that would be, uh, how you're showing, and it would be in your charter contract. And option three is an option where you're actually supplanting the state performance data with your own data, which is really reserved for schools that are, um, it, you know, it's a lot of data, uh, that you have to collect. So that's reserved for s- schools with, uh, very unique populations and missions. Or it's not reserved for, but it's suggested for, I should say.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, should we move on to that last, um, portion of the economic framework? And then maybe we'll take a little bit of a break just after that, if that's, if that's okay. Missy.
Just wanna let you know that, um, Commissioner Sharon came on.
Gotcha. Great.
So I, I'm just looking at, I just wanna make sure we've ended this conversation, um, that we are removing the idea that they could do a plan, and we're removing the time constraint of within ninety days. So this is a snapshot data. I still, um, I, I, does that mean, and, and, uh, you're, the director stepped out of the room, but do we have to remove and school subsequently, we're I still don't know how it's a snapshot data for yellow versus green. There's gotta be some timeframe. And if, and I personally think, again, for transparency, that timeframe needs to be in, in here, all schools are gonna say, but I fixed it, it just was, uh, you know, after tax day, I submitted my taxes. So e- e- so I'm gonna kind of put this aside, but I'm gonna say, I don't think this is, this is strong enough for you to be able to really implement. So moving to conducive learning environment. Um, this one is um the combined re-enrollment rate for all eligible students. So we could remove back from twenty to ten, um, if that is what, what the, the group wants to do for others. Um, and I wanted to explain there was some comment, just clarity needed here about what this, what this indicator is about. What we're hoping for is uh, when you're in a school choice environment like you have, the choice to stay at a school is as um much of a choice as a choice to leave. And so what we're looking at is families choosing to re-enroll. And one of the reasons that the commission, the working force brought this up is there is plenty of data to support that students who move from school to school every year have lower expectations than students who stay put, even if they're in a low performing school. The consistency is a, you know, is, is, is it something that you want to reward? Um, it's a contract with those families to meet their needs. So um, one of the comments was about, you know, don't penalize us from when there's a natural uh change from a middle school to high school, even if we are a K twelve school and offer those grades. Um, the intention was never to penalize, and so we tried to clarify that. The only grades, like the starting grade are K one, two, three, four, not fifth graders. We expect that fifth graders, no matter when the school actually ends, will have a reasonable uh choice. There, there are plenty of reasons to choose a different middle school. Same happens at eighth grade. There are plenty of reasons to choose a different high school. And of course, twelfth grade, you wouldn't come back. So those students are not included in the uh, in the formula, even if your school offers those grades uh and, and the continuation. Um, and then the, the point would be that um you're getting points for your students to stay with you. There was a, there were questions about, well, what happens when my student, um, you know, has a reasonable uh reason for not returning, you know, something beyond their control. And so um we've added a couple more things. Um, there's the move out of state or area. Um, so I could, we could, I should say, move out of area would be lower than state. Um, age out of the school, graduate, um, are determined to need remote learning by medical professional is, is a reasonable, um, of obviously and unfortunately deceased or other reasons as determined by C S D. And so um, the question was, well, how does that go? And I added in language that said something like, on an annual basis, schools may provide C S D with rationale why a student might be el- eligible or not. And this is a practice that is done in other states. So if you have a hundred students and um of whom ninety return, so that's, that's amazing. That's great. And, and you would actually meet the targets. But if you had eighty students return or seventy students return, and of that was one family of five who um had extenuating cir- circumstances that caused that family to pull all of their students out of your school, there would be an option for you to present that information in your case to C S D and for them to accept it and to remove those students from your numerator and denominator so as not to um, to unnecessarily penalize. And I think family is one thing that certainly can skew, especially a small school. Um, you know, that may have many students at school. So there are things like that that could happen. Comments or questions from the commission?
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Beck.
So if, if family moves from Albuquerque to uh Las Cruces, um, that's not out of the state, but so would they be penalized?
Yeah, I should change that. Um, that, that should have said moved out of jurisdiction or district, uh not out of state. So thank you. That'll be changed. Okay, all right. Um, so maybe as we got through academic, y'all, so that, this, that's, I think the hardest and the most important. Um, and if you remember, in order to get sort of a renewal without conditions at that moment, and I would, based on what I understand of how you, how you oversee really a, a, a annual review that doesn't cause you to have any questions before P E C, you have to meet every single one of those. Um, and there are six. Um, so it's not a low bar, um, and, but it is also not an unnecessarily high bar. It is forced, it is really creating and off, you know, pointing out to schools, here's what we value um in, in you and why you've been chartered.
All right, what's the wishes of the, of the Public Education Commission? Would, would it be possible for us to take a, a, a little bit of a break?
Yeah.
Would we come back at two thirty? Would that seem, would that be okay? Just a little bit more than a half hour?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Let's take a thirty-six minute break. Uh, all right.
Bye, Sharon.
Uh, good, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. Uh, sorry, I've been messing with my, my video. I can't get it back on because it says the, the host is not here and then stopped it. Missy, are you sick of seeing my face or uh? Oh, well, thank you for uh saving face. Yeah. Well, great. Well, if it's okay, we'll just uh hop, hop back in into the organizational framework. And Naomi, you, you okay to take the, take the reins?
Um, yes. In fact, Karina, have we invited Cindy in? All right. So um, what we're gonna do, and I will share my screen momentarily, um, is go straight to the financial uh indicators because we have Cindy. We have Cindy here to share, and um she's on East Coast time. So at five o'clock, she has another engagement um today. So we want to get her for the, for the last thirty minutes that she can. So um, here we are. And um, the first indicator is the one that um is Commissioner Gibson's favorite. Um, and we are gonna really talk about this one probably for a while. Um, and I will say that um Cindy Shoemaker, as she's getting on, um, let me know when she is on, please. Director Chavez, um, she works, she used to be um the executive director of uh, uh, authorizer in Michigan called Central Michigan University. She is nationally known and especially for creating financial frameworks. Um, she worked for NACSA, the National Association of Charter School Authorizers, or consulted with them. And she consults with the National Charter School Institute. Um, and she's worked with a number of schools. And I lean on her heavily when we're doing financial indicators, which she will call key performance indicators. Um, she, when, the reason that we brought her in was that, you know, uh, Director Chavez and the working group said they wanted to move this framework from a compliance-driven framework, which was, is the current framework to a outcomes, you know, deliverable and outcomes-based framework. And that is where um Cindy excels for, for financial. So she reviewed your current measures and then suggested a bunch of nationally recognized measures for charter schools, um, including this one. Uh, most of the other indicators, about all of them, that were more deliberably, you know, sort of ratios were um ultimately not included. You have four indicators of which the days of cash on hand is the most finance, like, you know, is the one financial indicator. The others become, they are about reporting um and fiscal oversight. So um, is Cindy on?
She's not on yet. Um, do you, do you want me to?
Why don't you about?
Yep. So I'll start talking about the pilot. So again, um, I was very concerned about small schools and that our financial performance framework would not ding the small schools. And um, so Cindy, um, initially, we talked about several indicators. We ended up eliminating many, but we did keep days cash on hand. And then we took the smallest schools. Um, and we ran them through the scorecard, looking at days cu- cash on hand. And um, I believe that we used the sixty-day standard, which is the higher standard. In any case, we found the days cash on hand. And um, could you promote Betty Sealy if you see her? And I can read.
I promoted Cindy, but I need Betty.
Okay. So I don't know Betty's not on.
Betty, can you please raise your hand and maybe I can see you then?
Okay, so if Cindy's here, I can let Cindy talk. And certainly what I have is standalone reports. I don't think we should name the schools, but I can let you know how many days cash on hand each of the schools had. And I believe that um, there were, I was surprised at how well the schools did on this indicator. Um, so if Cindy is on, yeah, we'll let Cindy speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to meet you. Um, yeah, so as Karina was saying, we, we um really started looking at the framework. And so I'm gonna just take us back just a little bit from, going from compliance to performance and how do we make sure it's just not compliance-heavy. And did a lot of discovery around that. I recommended a few different um indicators that I, that move into that performance. And uh, well, talking through each of those, there was different concerns about different ones. The days cash on hand, we always say cash is king. You know, it's one of those things that, you know, you have to have cash in order to operate. And so uh, you know, one of my recommendations was if you're gonna remove any, any of them, don't remove the days cash on hand from the perspective of as an authorizer. If a school's gonna have problems with their, their cash, you want to know about it sooner rather than later. So we were able to create a, use a system of epicenter and run these schools through uh because everybody was really concerned about the small schools. And I said, well, let's just see what it looks like. And we were all, um, they were surprised, I guess I would say. I guess I wasn't as surprised because I think it's, it's all relative. Um, that many of the school, most of the schools did not have any issues. And like Karina was saying, that maybe there was one of them that, that had an issue. I don't have that data right in front of me right now, so I'm trying to, you know, I'm going from recollection. But um, the measure that we use, the meat standards, came from the National Association of Charter School Authorizers. It's a standard that is very common across authorizers. And um, so I said, you know, if there is a concern at all that instead of taking out the days cash on hand, you might consider lowering, lowering that standard from the, the sixty days to maybe thirty. And I have uh worked or heard from other authorizers that that, that's what they've done. Because after looking at their portfolio and their environment, they felt um thirty days was sufficient. And so that would be a possibility, you know, if the commission was interested in, in looking at that. So um, that's where, where the days cash on hand came from. Karina, I'll pass it back to you.
Okay, yeah. So I, without naming the schools, what I would like to do is just read um the days cash on hand that we found. Um, so one was um a school that has been open for more than one term. Um, it had sixty-six point six one. Um, another school, small school, you would say, oh yes, that's one of our tiniest, had ninety-six days. Another school that is, oh, um, relatively small, also a hundred and twenty-five days. Another school had eighty days, and I think that school has like about um eighty students. The one school that had fewer than ten days cash on hand is a brand new school who was awaiting some award letters and has um struggled a little bit more with um, with the catch-up. They didn't get the ESER, they didn't get, you know, those sorts of funds because they were brand new and it's dependent on prior year. So they had the lowest. And I think as part of the work group um discussion, we, we talked about eliminating this um one or giving different criteria for brand new schools so they wouldn't get deemed.
Correct. New schools with their first two years of operation is what we landed on, would not be measured on cash on hand due to this issue of catch-up and the transportation issue um just to, just to make sure that they started off well. Um, yeah.
And I don't know if Betty is on and would have more to add.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, yeah, I was really surprised too that all these small schools had a really great, really great cash balances. And I think some of the reason why they, they're kind of stashing cash, as it were, is because um, you know, people are saving up for their building and they don't know where the money's coming from for their buildings. And so they're doing the best they can to spend other monies on, on program and to save operating funds for their uh, for their building.
And, and I was just looking at one more school whose um name is not going to be revealed, but we know this school is one of those saving cash to uh expand their building. They had nine hundred and forty-six days cash on hand.
Yeah, yeah. I have, I have just a few quick questions. Some of these are gonna probably be uh, maybe not the smartest questions, but I just, I, I want to make sure that these numbers, Karina, that you just shared, that, that's, that's unrestricted cash. So those are, that's S E G or any other like uh grants that the school has received, but it's not including things like Indian education funds, so on and so forth.
Yes, Alan, they are strictly S E G fund.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for that, Betty. I think another question I have is this, this is the stupid question. When we say, so cash in hand, that means that it's not that the school dish, the, the, the charter school has um authority over that funding for um reimbursement or anything like that. It's actually like literally in their bank account that we're looking at that, that money. Okay.
Um, some of it, and, and some of it too, um, I'm sorry, sorry about that. Some of it too is I didn't take into account any R F Rs that this cash might be covering. This is just like saying, you know, all, they've gotten all their R F R money, nothing, none of it is, is obligated to cover other costs.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Um, I have one comment, but I'm gonna hold that for a second. But one, the other thing I, that I've been thinking about, like Betty, what time of the month was this done? Because I, I, I know for some schools, it doesn't sound like very many schools are on the threshold of sixty. It sounded like all of them were way above um sixty. Uh, but I was just curious for some schools, you know, given how S E G goes out, the beginning of the month or whenever that money hits the bank versus the end of the month, that could be a huge storyline difference, you know, of, of just the way that funding flows. And you all know this much more than I do. Um, and so I'm just, I'm just, it's more of a comment, but kind of like something that. Um, and so I'm just, I'm just, it's more of a comment, but kind of like something that I'm stirring in my head that, especially for smaller schools, that the difference between March 1st and March 30th is huge potentially.
So this is as of the audit, so as of June 30th of, and the audit we looked at was 2021.
Okay, great. And then the only other thing I, I, and this is not, I don't want to make this sound like I'm, I'm badgering the PED or the second floor here, which is our finance, uh, finance team. I do know that through no fault of our charter schools, they wait for months, sometimes nine months, to like get a reimbursement request completed and get that money back. And I, I, in my mind, and I'm sorry, I'm thinking about all the worst-case scenarios on this one, but I just think about how could we possibly hold a school account if they're like, oh, they're waiting for like all this money to get reimbursed and it might not be their fault. So I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying we need like a little like get out of jail free card here for this, but that, that's the reality of many, many of our schools, Betty, and, and commissioners, that they wait so long. And, and I would hate it for us to be holding a school account to something that may not be their, may not, may not be, may not be their fault.
Right. And what I, my observations from being here for a long time is some schools are not quick to do their RFRs. And I think if they are not doing their RFRs regularly, maybe that needs to be looked at. But when you're doing your RFRs every month, every couple of months, and one school recently, they submitted an RFR in September and they just got reimbursed yesterday for something they submitted in September. And that just seems to be sometimes the squeaky wheel. You just call and say, I haven't got my money. And that's the school that they're going to push through and, and get them paid. Um, and, and, and we always get the same, I can't say excuse, but they always say, well, you know, we're shorthanded, we're so busy. But to me, you know, if a school's money, it really straps, you know, their ability to function.
But for clarity, this is done at the audit time, right? Does this not the end of, like, when, when are you proposing to do this? So at that point, do schools usually have their funding reimbursed or is it?
No, not necessarily, because the reimbursements are submitted all the way up until the end of June. And so, um, depending on how quickly they spend their, their federal awards is when they can put their final RFRs for that federal award.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you for that comment because that was, um, a fabric of the conversation that we've had because we had actually one of the business administrators that does a significant number of schools. So that he had a school that was still waiting for an October of 2020 reimbursement. So, you know, uh, we, I know I struggled with, um, trying to hold schools accountable because unfortunately we know the delays that, that are coming with that. Um, I'm going to say personally, I like the last comment there and that's all I'm going to say.
Oh, yeah.
Cindy, do you want to, um, do you have any ideas? So I think there, there are two things. One is, is there a yellow to be added? And two, is there, uh, a way to add, you know, something? Or have you seen a way to add some language around the RFR? As a, as, I, I want to call it disclaimer, but saying, you know, if you have evidence that you are, are, that you are, that you actually have that money, it's just coming to you later, that that would count in some way in this measure?
Yeah, so some of the conversations that I've had, um, with concerns similar to this. Um, yes, I think you could do, uh, a yellow here. Um, again, looking at that standard to, to allow that. But from, from the perspective of the actual situation, it's really a receivable, right? So the schools should be recording a receivable if they have it. So when I would look at one of these, if I had a school that was yellow or red, one of the things that I would do is pick up their financial statement and say, well, what does a receivable look like? And then I'd probably want to have a conversation with the school to understand what that receivable is or if there's a way that I could confirm that, you know, with, um, the PC or the PD. You know, maybe you could do something along that line. Um, but, you know, that's what I would be looking at because I, I understand the uneasiness, but my, my concern about days cash on hand is as an authorizer, no matter what the situation is, if a school is critically low on cash, I would want to know that. Now, the reasons for it can, you know, there can be a lot of explanations for it, but I would want to know that it's time, I need to have a conversation to find out what's going on with this school. And that's the way that I look at frameworks and accountability systems like this is, you know, there's always environmental, um, context that's important. And so, uh, but I would want that red flag to at least let me know that, hey, the school may have an issue. Um, and let me do some more follow-up on it to figure it out, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, uh, Cindy. I, is there any spot within the financials that talks about how close you are to enrollment, like your actual goals? Uh, because that, I mean, that's what really, that's what I just heard you say, Cindy. And I know you didn't say that, but like, you know, if you are, if you have this great lofty goal of having 100 kids, but you're at 30 kids, um, there's a problem and that money ain't coming in. Uh, and you're, you're, you're not going to be at 30 days funding in a month, you know, uh, but.
Yeah, absolutely. We had a lot of conversation about enrollment and actually one of the KPIs that I recommended was called enrollment change and is really looking at, is your enrollment revenue stable, you know, over time? Um, because there is, uh, enrollment included in one of the other, uh, frameworks, they decided to, um, not have it in the financial one, uh, with the idea that was being considered. And, and I think it was operational or maybe the academics, I apologize. I'm, I'm not sure where it ended up, so.
It ended up in academics. It is the re-enrollment rate, but that's not the same as what this indicator would have been, which is enrollment period.
Right, right.
So I think we, we removed it or I, but I'm not sure that was a why. Like, I, I don't know if, if it should come back in.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, because I don't think we flushed out language enough. If the language had been more of a financial language, you know, because we were concerned about double dinging in, in two areas that you haven't, you know, one was the recurring enrollment, but I get this idea that you're under-enrolled, so therefore you're underfunded because you can't meet your, you know, there's, there's two issues. Did you over-project? And that, of course, excuse me, is that financial issue? But are, are you continually under-enrolled, which is not allowing you to, you know, provide the, you know, the best academic programming that you can because you, you can never afford it. Um, but I've lost my train of thought.
I, so sure, recurring enrollment, but I think that, and, and this kind of harkens back to what, uh, Vice Chair Burt said, like, we, we need to set a high standard here for New Mexico. And schools should be looking at, we made a guess in September and the spring. We guessed what our enrollment was going to be and we sent that off to school budget. And we said we were going to have 200 students. And the PED is going to look at 40-day and school budget's going to readjust. We don't have to wait till 40-day. We can look on the first day of school and we can be working towards filling those seats and making sure that we have a, a good track record of accurately predicting. Or are we just trying to rob Peter to pay Paul and saying we're going to get a huge number of students and we'll deal with the money loss later, which is not sustainable in my opinion?
Right, right.
So, and, you know, as much as it may not seem that I do appreciate these conversations, so. Um, but I guess my, I have a bigger question about this one. We're, when we're talking about, we're, we're going to look at these financial statements. And, you know, I appreciate Cindy saying, well, this would be a red flag and I need to have a conversation with, um, with this school. I guess my concern and question is, um, for us, capacity. Who's having these financial conversations with, with the schools? Um, and do we have capacity to have those conversations with the schools? Because it's not going to be Budget Bureau, we know that. Um, and I, you know, we've, so that's, that's where I have, um, concern that if we're going to put something in here, I want to make sure that we're getting accurate information back to us about the, the concern. And that, you know, because it's not, you know, no offense to anyone. I mean, I think this is Alan's degree, yes, school business administrate, yeah. You know, but for the rest of us, it's not, um, you know, it's not the language we, we talk. So that's where, that's where I have concern.
May I respond? Um, thank you, Commissioner Gibson. I, I hear you. And, um, last year, uh, when we were doing the site visits, I sat in on, um, the conversation that we had because every year when we visit the schools, we meet with the school's business manager and with the board, right? Both of those entities, along with the head administrator, should have a sense for the financial, um, condition of the school. And, um, I sat in on one where Melissa Sanchez was asking these questions. You know, there was a school that had decreased enrollment, they had budget that was decreasing. We heard over and again from schools that the loss of the small school size adjustment was heavily impacting them. We also heard about how, um, the increase in teacher salary mandate was making staff more and more expensive when you combine it with the insurance and other benefits that teachers get, that, that, that increased, um, those expenses. I found that the business managers were very articulate about it. Um, and the other thing I want to say is that you haven't yet met the new person that we hired in our office, uh, who is replacing Ms. Sanchez on our team. Um, but I've been on some site visits with her already and she is top-notch. So I think that the Charter Schools Division is able to hold those conversations. I think that the business managers are, um, able to respond appropriately, reflect on what's going on at their school. I don't know that there's always easy answers. What do you do if you have decreasing enrollment and decreasing small school size adjustment? You make, you make adjustments to your bu- budget, but I think we get a good sense for the context of the school through our site visit process and the protocol we have when we talk to the business managers.
Does she have a non-poaching clause in her contract?
She's a regular staff person and she is really experienced and really delightful. You're going to be happy when you meet her.
Wayne?
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, the first thing is, uh, you know, just like Karina was mentioning, these unfunded mandates that pop up. Um, and this is now going to be something that, uh, we're going to have to abide by. And I, I can give you an example of last year at Aldo. Uh, the state mandated the 7% pay raise, which was well, you know, much needed. But by the time we moved our teachers up from level one to level two, level two to level three, our, it was a 20% pay increase, uh, across the board for, for everybody. So that, you know, that's, you know, looking at math, that's, uh, 13% of unfunded that we got. We lost our small school funding. Uh, you know, 30, 30 units right there for small school funding. Um, and the other rural index and, and the at-risk index aren't coming anywhere close to that 30 units that we lost. We're only at about five to seven units, so we're still down 23 units. So our school, uh, as being a small school is going to have to make decisions this year, this coming up year. Uh, if they don't get other funding, that they're going to have to cut program. And so they are going to have to change, um, right now, what the charter, uh, with the programming for the charter. And I think that's what a lot of small schools are very concerned about is, is the cash on hand. But then again, when, uh, CSD comes to do the site visit and they hear these things, uh, maybe they can help, uh, uh, find solutions to these issues. And so, and it sounds like that's already what they're doing when they come for these site visits. So, but those are the concerns that we have.
So I wonder, there, there's a thing of, you know, having a framework gives you what is, uh, when everything's going well, this is the, this is what you want to have. When there are situations like this where there's an incredible cut to funding that are beyond anyone's control, it seems like that would be something a PC would waive this indicator for all schools or for all small schools in a year, which would be in your purview. Um, but my, you know, so my, my thinking is it's kind of better to keep something in since the expectation is there and, and people understand what, what you're striving for, because you need cash on hand. I mean, sad to hear, you know, that the programs would be cut, which is going to impact even more. The previous indicator we discussed, which was, you know, implementation, the fidelity of implementation of education programs. I can see that becoming, you know, conflated with this as well. But at some point, you can't run a school without the money. And you want to make sure that you don't have a school in the middle of the year have no cash. And but then there's exceptions. And so I wonder what, you know, if there's ways of working through those exceptions versus removing an indicator, which removes all of your oversight.
I guess, um, because I don't know, um, exactly what, how deep the oversight of the Budget Bureau was. I think it used to be a little bit closer, the oversight, than it appears there is now. Because I know prior budget directors would actually come to us and, you know, let us know when schools were in danger because they had, you know, low cash or, or whatever. And I don't think that's, that hasn't happened in a long time. Like, I'm going to say at least two and a half, three years. Um, so I don't know what that, uh, I'm beginning to think at this point in time, outside of the what quarterly report, reporting that schools have to do. I don't think there's a lot of oversight that happens any longer. I wish we could rely on that and, and have, and say, well, at least I know if there's going to be a problem, we could rely on budget coming to us so then we could, you know, and it wouldn't have to sit in this. But I don't think it's happening at this point in time. Missy?
So, um, I want to talk about training and what the role of a board is. No, well, because they are fiduciary and they aren't all doing this. And a lot of head administrators don't have boards that will support them in this way. This is the main function of a board. They can close themselves faster than any authorizer can close them if they don't know this. They won't do it if you're not going to look for it. Some will, but not enough. And I think that, you know, you're, you're saying, we're looking at this is going to get them to look at it. And then they can know these things and they can be asking, you know, what's our plan? The small school size adjustment was phased out over a number of years. So they, it's been a known factor that's coming at them. And so, you know, which schools have had boards that have been proactive in, in figuring this out? And which head administrators have been left trying to figure it out for themselves? The boards are the fiduciary and they need to be providing that oversight. Because, yeah, I mean, school budget does not have the staffing. We now have more staffing.
Chair Brower, if I may. Um, so a couple of things. One is I think Betty, as a former, um, business manager for a charter school, could talk about the, the information that is included in those quarterly reports. Um, school budget still keeps quarterly reports. Um, our staff could take a look at those, I think, um, that school budget. Um, our staff could take a look at those, I think, um, that school budget could potentially share. Um, I wouldn't want for this to be something over and beyond what already is collected, either through the audit or through those quarterly reports. And um, the final thing I'd like to say um, is that the way it's written right now says 60 days. If we want to um, consider 30 days, I think that would be reasonable. But um, let's, let's ask Betty, do we have days cash on hand in the quarterly reports that go to the PED?
No, the only thing that goes to the PED are the cash reports that just shows last year's fund balance. Um, revenue to debt expenditures to date and loans between funds for outstanding R F Rs. And then the um, detail report that shows by line item, what revenue and what expenditures there are, which gets loaded, uploaded into O B M S. And those two dollar amounts have to match or you're out of balance, but they don't ask for anything else.
Betty and Cindy. Uh, I was just thinking about, like, I just left the uh, charter school board. And one of the things for the last couple of years that has really supported a small school significantly has been the E S R funds that have been coming through. Um, and so this, so when we did this, was E S R included in the unrestricted? Or was that like taken out of the unrestricted? Cause that, I mean, we, every school right now, I know last year was like it almost was a struggle to figure out what to do with some of the funding, I recall. Uh, at least for the school that I was part of. Uh, but I was just curious where, how E S R kind of uh, potentially inflates the, the, the current state of many of our schools? Or if we corrected for that at, when we did the pilot and kind of, kind of took that money out, but I was, I was just curious.
Okay, so E S R, the way E S R played into that is, is that that money was being spent instead of the S E G money. Um, as long as it's appropriate and in their, in their plans, then they could spend the E S R funds. So that helped to build cash in the operating fund. But you know, E S R funds, that's oh, one this year and one next year. And then they're going to be back to uh, spending that, their, any cash that they have, they're going to be have, working on spending it down if there are recurring costs that they're using the E S R money for.
Thank you for that, Betty. And I think that probably, I don't know what we, we can do with that information, but I think we can share that we probably aren't going to have a ton of schools that have like 90 days of cash on hand potentially. Uh, especially the smaller ones after, after the funding is expended through, through E S R. And I, I totally get how, I thank you for sharing the way you did, Betty, because it's, it's, you know, E S R is able to be utilized in ways that then you can hold on to the S E G uh, uh, for uh, for, you know, for buildings and things of that nature uh, in different ways. And so, um, so yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just stirring around that, that, that part of, around what? Uh, like everything right now, there's inflation. Um, and so the numbers are probably a little bit inflated. But um, but I think that I'm, I'm, personally, I'm, I'm, although I've gone back and forth on this over the last couple of years, uh, this, this specific uh, cash on hand metric, I think it, I, in sub, and, 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 in spirit, I'm with it. In substance, I think it matters. I think substance matters, you know, like the um, what day are we going to look at? You know, is this Karina, you're going to, your team is going to look at this at the beginning of the month when S E G is flushed? Or is it going to be at the end of the month? And those, those things kind of matter as we move forward. And so maybe that's more of a procedural thing that we need to think about, like when we look at this information and do we need to think about that in, in an equitable way? So that's not like, you know, Wayne's school was um, graded on this at the beginning of the month and my school was graded on it at the end of the month, which could be a significant difference.
Um, so Cindy sent over some possible language to include a yellow, um, which I've added in here uh, with a typo in the, in the yellow and with two reds. But um, with green being unrestricted cash is greater or equal to 60 days or greater than 30 days with a positive increase in days cash in the most recent fiscal year. Um, unrestricted days, yellow would be this new one, unrestricted day, days cash ratio is greater than 30 days, but less than 60 days and does not meet the definition of red. Um, and red is unrestricted days of cash ratio is less than or equal to 30 days.
Wayne? Okay, so that um, brings up a, what you just said, Alan, and that's our school is using that E S R funds to pay for teachers, pay for E A's. Um, and so that is keeping our S E G higher. So a, a question that I have is we might have to ask the PED for emergency funding. Other schools do that throughout the state. It's, it's pretty common. A lot of charter schools don't, but they can. So if we ask the PED for emergency funding, will that count as this money that's cash on hand?
May I clarify, Wayne? Um, at one point, I know that charter schools did ask for emergency, but are you certain that they're able to get it now?
Yes. Well, according to my local legislator, the yes, we are able to receive emergency funding in charter schools. Now, she could be wrong, but um, Aldo is in, is in that situation. If something doesn't happen uh, within the next year financially, uh, it will, it will drastically change the uh, makeup of the school.
As I see Betty's hand up.
So my question is, if the charter school asks for emergency funding, how is that going to affect them on the financial framework? Is that going to negatively impact them on the performance framework?
I'm going to say it's probably unlikely unless, unless you I guess can't count it as your cash on hand, but in prior, because it hasn't happened often, but I know we've gotten notifications. And I think the schools have been brought up when they've asked for that emergency that the budget bureau and usually the director of the budget bureau has come in with a concern that there's been emergency funding uh, been requested and that's been looked at. So I think even if it didn't affect the performance framework, I think it could affect the school, you know, in a, in another fashion with some action by the commission. Because the budget bureau usually looks at that as, you know, a red flag, that there's, there's something um, there potentially i- is something um, that could be problematic.
So I'm, I'm um, I'm not sure if it's 60 days or if you want to lower that to fewer days. I think that could be something that the commission could consider. Um, I, I want to remind us that working to meet the yellow, uh, working to meet in, in the financial portion of this framework would still allow a school to meet all of their conditions um, or go through a differentiated review. So you're not penalizing anyone who's under the yellow and really red is the only time. And they have to get, I think it was six reds in these sections to, you know, be really not on track for renewal. So we're, we're given a lot of um, I, I wonder elevating it in a very public way create, gives also use some ammunition to say, look at our portfolio of schools. And you know, why are we not getting the funding that we need so that we can meet a very nationally recognized standard for charters? And this isn't, and I think you would have a little bit more of a, instead of hiding it, it'd be very transparent. Um, and you would not have to act against any school. So there, there, there are, um, and, and I want to just remind everyone that the, you know, those new schools wouldn't count. And I, I wonder, Wayne, do you, is what is, what is a reasonable amount of cash on hand to have? Because you clearly need it. If a water boiler explodes, you can, you have to have cash on hand.
And I agree with you. I think the 30 days is, is very reasonable uh, to have cash on hand and
Yeah.
So the, just to give you a little background, the loss of small school funding almost coincided with um, uh, getting our ARPA and our E S R funds. So it's really hard to say what, how much were, some of these schools are going to have cash on hand now because of all those extra funds that have came in. So I, yeah, I, I really don't know that answer, but I would say 30 days is reasonable.
I, I, we appreciate that. And, and I know Cindy has to go and um, she did have another commitment. Um, but I want to thank her for the work on this. And I wonder Cindy, if you could at a later date, if you haven't already, send the, the enrollment metric that we had discussed, just to be able to share with the whole commission too.
Yeah, I did send it to you.
Oh, you did?
So it should be in your email. So thank you, everybody. I'm sorry. I need to leave.
Thanks, Cindy.
So, so then moving back to this, if 30 days is a reasonable, that you know, if they, if you are a school with in your third or future years, you have fewer, less than a month of cash on hand. And as Cindy said, you've looked at accounts receivable and you know, there's not some extenuating circumstance. I wonder if there, you know, if this does hold some water and allow you to look at it, where I'm imagining some schools will fall under yellow. And if that happens, if the majority of your schools, as the E S R funds disappear, fall there, that becomes something that the commission needs to address. So sorry, it doesn't show up.
Instead of changing the number of days, why not say that if you have 60 days or greater than 30 days, that's blue? And then 30 days is, is green? And then the unrestricted is less than 30 days could be yellow or red. Just eliminate one of those colors.
So I think I think that's saying the same thing, because in this portion of the framework, they're working to meet is treated like a meats. So we didn't, um, that would, that would require changing everything, but I, so I think, I think what this does by putting in working to me is it gives the commission an opportunity to talk about it. Or, you know, it, it sort of opens it up as a, this is an optimal. The, the other option would be to put 60 days as blue and, you know, say 40 days as green and 30 days as yellow, you know, that, which we could also look at. All right, I'm going to move to the next, unless there's other commissioners who would like to dress and see finances, everyone's favorite. Um, so the next one is the financial audit review. Uh, so this is again, one where there was asked to, can we have a yellow in here, which I think is a reasonable? Um, and again, I just had the same comment, but this is your financial audit review. So um, the school received financial audit with an unqualified opinion, is devoid of sufficient uh, significant deficiencies and, and material weaknesses, and does not include a going concern disclosure. Um, there was an error in there that has been adjusted, that someone pointed out where I think it said ongoing and, and we switched it back. So thank you. Um, and um, yeah, questions on this one? And, and any ideas for yellow or the other thing we can do is uh, if the commission allows, Cindy can provide us with language for yellow um, that we can put into place before our new, new draft is released.
I can recommend a yellow.
All right.
To me, because what I don't like when I read the audits is that I don't like the responses from the schools sometimes. And so a yellow would be that you've received a, and, and you have not received an unqualified condition. But the board of the school is monitoring the um, on a monthly basis, the um, the school's response to see if the school's doing what they said they were going to do.
So I want to, I, I, I like it and we have four indicators on fight, on board oversight. And I want to make sure we don't add more board oversight here.
I'm sure that I'll be willing to get rid of some of those because they're less meaningful than this.
So I, I am not a financial expert and so I'm going to ask for the grace of being able to work with Cindy. And Missy, I invite you to
Like that, I don't know what a yellow would be. I don't.
But I know they exist in other frameworks. So I would just like that opportunity to be able to share and, and then come up with, with one that is um, reasonable and it very well may be exactly what Missy said.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I do like the, you know, it's, I, I like the binary model here, to be honest. I mean, I think it's great to show like improvement. I mean, we could, could say, I mean, maybe a yellow could, you know, could be showing some level of improvement from one year to the next in terms of um, you know, improving significant deficiencies or um, uh, repeat violations uh, or repeat occurrences. But I, I also think, I don't know if we need to force it, if it, if it's the, you know, the gravitas of this is like, you either got a pretty clean one or you got some major things that you need to work on. So I could go either way, but.
So yeah, and I think one of the things we've talked about is there are different types of opinions. And you know, this one is the unqualified opinion. Um, there, there are other ones that we could, we just, we sort of removed the different ways. And they are different gradations within the audit that we ended up not kind of going into. Um, but I, I suggest we come up with a, with a version.
Yeah, and I agree with the repeat violations or repeat findings in the audit. That's what um, a lot of the suggestions were is working to, and, and I think the board should be aware of that. And the board should be asking those questions every single month. Um, making sure, you know, whether it's a policy change that needs to happen at your school level or what, why are you having? And we, I, I would say a lot of times what happens with uh, the schools is there are cash that they have and not depositing within the 48 hours. That becomes a repeat finding every year, over and over and over. And it's um, just one of those things that um, I think that just making the schools aware, it's not a, a punishment. It's just making them aware of what needs to happen.
Thank you. Betty, sorry, I was ignoring your hand.
No, I know you were. Um, what I'm concerned about when I look at the audits is there are some schools, they don't get, they may not get a significant deficiency or a material weakness, but they'll have like nine findings. And they may all be compliance and other matters, but that's still a lot. And I really think that you need to look at something like that, even though they're, they're not, oh my gosh, uh, findings. You know, they're still not doing their job if they're getting all a bunch of small findings.
Okay, if there are no other suggestions, I will move on to the next one. Um, did it move on? No. Okay, um, this is fiscal oversight. The school is, and its governing board established, approve and monitor annual budget, execution, safeguard the financial health and activities of the school. Um, again, this was a binary, the school consistently demonstrates compliance with requirements and school does not consistently uh, demonstrate compliance. I think there was also sort of some questions of what is, you know, is there subjectivity involved? What does this actually look like um, in an audit? Um, how are you measuring this? So I kind of turn it to Missy.
Sorry, but one of the things that I think is glaringly missing here that would be easier to monitor is the activities of the finance committee. The finance committee members, not the business manager, but the board members who serve on the finance committee, are they regularly testing internal controls and reporting on that to the full board?
Um, so does every school, every school in New Mexico has a finance committee?
It's required.
Okay.
Did, did we keep the indicator that talks about the school having the um, capacity, let's see, having the finance?
There's a difference between having a finance command, having a finance committee that tests random internal controls every month. Like, we have a, we have a series of schools that insist that their entire board is the board of finance. And I ask them all the time, how then do you, how are you monitoring internal controls? How are you testing your policies and procedures in an open, full meeting? And they have no response from me because they aren't. They're just reviewing the monthly statement from the bank with the business manager. That's all they're doing. That's all they're doing.
I, I like the idea of us like looking at how the board is doing this. I just wonder about the capacity every single school, every single month, I think might be really difficult for, for us to monitor.
I agree because I would have to be doing it, but I think that it would be something, it, it would be something that would be, you would be able to do. I think that, and then at a site visit, the team could review. I mean, you know, anybody can look at somebody's website, look at their meeting minutes as long as they post them. Um, and see whether or not a report was given. It would be great if they posted the reports as well, but they probably wouldn't and they didn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily have to or want to with the financial internal control monitoring, but they could have those reports that could be seen by the site visit team. And that's so it could be checked to see that it's being done like a fire, like the emergency drills.
Uh, Missy, I, for finance committee, is it only quarterly that they have to meet? I think is that, uh, by state statute, they don't have to meet every month?
There's nothing in state statute stating when they need to meet. It's just that they have to have two board members on the finance committee. That's all it says.
So then that's left up to the individual, uh, charter schools policy, what they have in their policy.
Right. I mean, you know, you're all, every charter school board member signs an affidavit basically saying that they fully understand, generally accepted accounting principles and P S A B and everything they need to know to be a fiduciary and monitoring internal controls and, and COSO and monitoring and control, internal controls is one of the top things in all of those. So that's where that is. I, if you want to meet quarterly, that's, that's one thing, but I think most finance committees meet monthly is from my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
So I added in and read that tests internal finance controls, but if that's not in statute, that's really hard.
It's in gap and it's in COSO. They are signing affidavits saying that they do those things. So I don't know.
I'm just going to speak as a volunteer board member of a school not in this state. It's really hard for us to find others who will volunteer their time to be on a charter board. It's a really important role. Um, and we do spend a lot of time doing our finances, but I would get really hard if I was getting monitored for internal, like.
It is so easy to monitor for internal controls. It is so easy. They can do so many things. They can take a bank statement and choose five random transactions. Or they could choose the five biggest amount of money that's been spent or the checks that are out of order and investigate those. Who ordered it? What was it for? Did it have a P O? They can log on to E F T P S dot gov quarterly. These are the employees we say we've paid. And that matches what was paid to the government and it was paid on time. You can, um, you can run a, a check to see if any of the, uh, vendor IDs match social security numbers of your employees. Maybe you allow employees to be vendors, then you wouldn't do that. But there are very simple, not, you know, overly burdensome things that I train board members on every month that could be done year in and year out. And some of them are starting to do it. And, and I think that I see more board capacity. Um, I understand they are volunteers. This is a very difficult volunteer job, but this is job number one. Nobody can provide the awesome idea that somebody had if you don't have the money.
Uh, I'm trying to think about what a yellow would be in this scenario. And if it is, I know we have, I know that we did, did get some feedback on that, but I'm just curious about like what? This seems like a yes or a no kind of thing. And I think that we could spend a lot of time thinking through what that might be, uh, but I don't know. I don't, I don't know if there's an example from another state or another model or something from, from others.
Ask what, um, Cindy has seen in, in NACSA. This is another measure that is, that is being rolled out nationally. I wonder if things like what Missy's talking about, some of the best practices become, you know, they're doing everything except it's not, you know, perfect and, and green is perfect and yellow is going to be good enough. Um, you know, working to meet, but we would never say that that board has the best fiscal oversight that is there, right? Um, so I wonder if, you know, Missy, you write down here is what exceptional oversight looks like. And then we think about, well, what would, what would reasonable oversight look like so that we're not doing a binary, but you're, you are showing the exceptional. All right. So I think that, um, that gets us, that, that covers the, the four, you know, so we only had, you know, four financial, um, and that covers all of them.
Naomi, I think we may have skipped financial reporting and compliance.
We did. Thank you. So sorry. So, uh, I'm gonna.
May I ask a question before you get there?
Yeah.
Did, did you edit out by chance? Did we take out the financial, um, finance committee and the audit committee?
They, they are, it's in, Karina, it was here. The board has an audit and finance committee. It's bullet one, two, three, four, five, under fiscal oversight. And I just added in that test, the controls, uh, based on the last one. So no, it was not added, edited out.
Okay, thanks.
It was not a separate indicator.
Excuse me, can I interject? One quick little thing is those committees are two different committees. So it's an audit committee and a finance committee because the way it's written there, it looks like it's one committee.
That is a very good comment that we did not receive through public common process. Um, and I will, so you, so it's going to be two bullets.
Or it's a audit committee and a finance committee.
All right. Thank you. All right, um, financial reporting and compliance. Um, this school demonstrates its ability to oversee public funding designated for New Mexico students. And, um, this one we had meets, you know, the school submits all budget requests to PED, uh, the budget approval process, et cetera. And it does not, it's not submitting. Um, and once again, we don't have something where a school submits it, but it's late or all budget requests. We, you know, we could build in a working to meet that allows for some gradation between a positive negative, but I'm not sure if that's the way you want to go. Is there, is there room to build a yellow? Where it's maybe doing it sometimes, but it's not, you know, the school's not consistent in everything?
I guess my question is, um, how well Budget Bureau would communicate to us that things have, you know, that's my concern. That if we put a yellow in there that, you know, they're late, maybe, you know, maybe some schools get a little ding because they were, they were reported and some weren't. Um, I just don't know how successful we are in getting reports from the Budget Bureau on whether schools are reporting timely or is that just adding one more layer that someone's going to have to be bugging them? Do, have all the schools, you know, reported on time and things like that. So I just don't know, um, how well we can get the information.
I guess my question is currently, do you have schools that maybe one month it's public, publicly posted and the next month it's late or is, are they, is this something that they're doing all the time consistently?
So I'm going to ask Wayne to help me with the answer here, but I believe that schools are mostly on quarterly reporting and let, and they move to monthly reporting when there's a concern. So being on monthly reporting could be in the yellow. And then I also believe that, um, although it is, um, expected that reports are posted, can't always find them. So that would potentially also be included in the yellow.
But so let me ask this, if, if they're on monthly reporting, my understanding is it's possible that you move, that you, you can move off of monthly reporting during the course of that cat, that school calendar year, correct?
That is correct. And you can also submit an amendment form six months after you should have, but we're still holding schools accountable to what is the higher standard and that is meeting the deadline. Um, and so although you corrected it during the school year and you're not getting a red, if you had to move to monthly, that indicated that something was up.
So we'd have to reword that because it's possible that during the course of the school year, they were under monthly, they're no longer, but sometime during that school year, they did fall under a monthly reporting requirement.
And Karina, I'm not familiar with, uh, monthly reporting. Uh, I guess we've just never been late to be put on a monthly reporting. So I'm not familiar. So I'm learning, learning about that right now.
So we, should we work on this one as well if we can come up with other areas potentially? After this meeting? And can I just ask a question? Is this information that, that, that Karina has provided to you from another department within PED or?
Correct.
So this is not a direct oversight?
Yeah, School Budget Bureau.
Well, the part that we can oversee is do they, do they post it on their websites?
And, and you're currently doing that?
Yeah, very few are posting it on their websites.
And that's covered as well under, um, and so let's, so maybe we need to, to move, uh, yet, and this is an important measure to have. Or is this, you know, is, uh, what, what values is adding if it's not this department overseeing it is my question.
I think is a potentially more valuable is a question around, are you having an annual meeting where your equity council is giving you their advisement package? And are you having your public meeting in which parents are being told about the budget and have input? Those things are required. I'm sure Commissioner Gibson remembers some schools that have been up in front of the commissioners and have, have unwittingly signed those statements saying they did that without actually doing it. And so that is a place where they can actually get into some trouble.
So that's in the budget development process, which does require that a school hold a meeting, um, with their budget for the public to add comment and input. And it did use to be monitored, uh, in a more systematic way across the PED. Um, in the budget planning process and we could incorporate some level of, um, look specifically for charter schools. I think, um, we know of one school that didn't and we put them on a financial performance framework last year. So, um, I, I do think that, you know, it's in statute, it is a compliance thing that schools should be doing. That aligns with that indicator.
And I know we had a conversation about calendars. So that, um, could that not be calendared? So that you could do an easy check because it would be on the, obviously, I guess you'd have to do a random check to make sure that it did happen, but if it was on their public calendar, then the school would be more obligated. So the, you know, maybe doesn't necessarily have to go in here, but if there's a requirement that the school submit a calendar and that that meeting is calendared for the year, then, you know, it, it really does obligate the school to have that without having to have it here.
So schools do fall under a specific budget development calendar and have, um, let's see, what do you call that? Different dates that their budget is due, like it's a window of time and um, different schools have different due dates for that, but we could definitely look at board minutes to see that they held a meeting, a public meeting to talk about their budget.
I'm actually going to move us on to organizational framework because a lot of this is covered there and I want to make sure that, you, you know, um, I think some of my thoughts around the financial framework was it really is a compliance framework for finances versus an output measure, like a ratio of how healthy the school is financially. Um, and so when they are in multiple places, do we need them in both places? And I think that Commissioner Gibson, this gets back to yours. You wanted a framework that had the majority of performance areas being academics and we have now four in finance and seven in organizational. So I challenge the commission to think about, do we need all of these? And if not, which ones could go to put it, to right-size it back into a, an output, you know, academic framework? And, and maybe the answer is we do need all of them. Um, but the, a lot of this oversight is being happening already. We don't need to put everything into the framework when you already have systems in place. So with that, I'm going to move to governance. There were four, um, indicators within governance. The first was board membership. Um, and again, that, you know, can there be a yellow? The number of governing council members stays within the range designated in the bylaws. Um, if it drops below, all vacancies are filled within forty-five days. And then, uh, there was, uh, seventy-fives was an extension provided by C S D. And there was a comment about sort of, what, what does that mean? I think, uh, of the extension, but I'm assuming that was a piece there. Go ahead.
One of the things that we noticed is it, it's not the range designated in bylaws. It's designated, designated in statute that they have to have five, a minimum of five governing council members.
Um, so often that's written in the bylaws, but then schools may say, I want to have seven. And then you would want to make sure that they're in, you know, the legal term is the bylaws.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. Um, but does statute then not supersede the bylaws or just say, yeah, a designated in statute or by, and or bylaws?
I think bylaws are what the, you, you adopt as a board member, the bylaws. Um, the bylaws have to be created that they are within statute.
Okay.
But you can, you know, so that way you can say, I need eleven member board and you'd be held accountable to that.
Okay.
I'm sure most schools use five. That's, if that's what.
Minimum, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. But if they did, you know, that's a, it's, it is because if you're out of compliance with your bylaws, then you are not running as a, as a nonprofit, which is important.
Well, charter schools are not nonprofits, but bylaws are, um, out of compliance if they have less than five, right? So, um, the bylaws though are exactly as they sound. They are the governing document for the board and the board needs to be following that. And, and at one point there was some strictness around, you have to say how many, you have to say seven versus a range. And I think the P E C has come around to say, yeah, you can have a range, you can have five to whatever, seven, ten, and that way there's, there's some flexibility for the charter school. But, um, the board should be reading and following their bylaws. I, I'm really glad that we have this written as is because I think it shows the importance for a document that the school itself created for itself.
Okay. Is there, I don't know that there could be a yellow here, and if you can.
I see it right there. I don't either, but I would like to know what the
It's a mistake. I did that the this bottom part, all members of the governing body.
Okay.
Yeah, that's sorry, I did this on an airplane and on my way here. So if you go to the next one, that's where it is. All members of the governing body who have served for at least six months have completed all training hours required by CSD and PEC.
Can you help me understand why six months instead of three? What the what your research or understanding? Because I I would be okay with three months. I don't think that they should onboard anybody in the last quarter of the fiscal year, but six months seems a lot. And I I did a an analysis of the schools from last year using six months as, you know, who would have whose rating would have changed? And the majority of reason why boards are getting the ratings that they get is not from new members not completing. That's a very small percentage. It's mostly from continuing members not completing. And so I just so so many of them already don't value the training. And they put it off. I think if it's six months, they'll say, why can't it be nine? And why can't it be two years? So I'd rather see it be three months. It doesn't make a difference. It wouldn't have improved anybody's ratings, whether it was three or six months.
So you know, there's a piece of me that agrees with you that you shouldn't be onboarding someone in the last quarter, but sometimes you have no choice. Someone leaves, you you need your five. And I think we put the six months in there to accommodate someone that could be coming at the end. But then, you know, there's
But why not three? Why six? Why give them all the way from January to June instead of April to June? And could it could it not be that it's three months? April, May, June? And if a school wants to say, well, we onboarded somebody on March 30th, and then their mother died and they can't do the training, like we can take special things into circle into consideration, but they have so many opportunities now to get the training done. I don't.
But what if it's May, June, and July?
If it's May, June, no, July is the next fiscal year.
The next fiscal year, right, right? So what if it's May?
If it's April, May, June, that's three months.
Right.
I'm just saying, why January, February, and March? That's six months. I presume that you mean six months to the fiscal year. That's how we track board training hours.
So I think we're trying to get around the fact that some people must bring on new board members in the last quarter. And Missy, what would be helpful for the commission to know is how those new board members can get training.
Right? So so first of all, I think it's important. So all of the training is required by fiscal year, right? So July 1 to June 30, that's the that's the cut. And so that's how we track it. That's how I've rated it since I've been here for five years. It's did you complete by June 30? So if they if they want to, you know, if they're going to onboard somebody because they absolutely have to, do it. But you know, and if you do it in in April, May, June, they have not just those three months, but they will have 15 months to get that done. So they have they have training on Canvas. It's on demand. They do it at their at their leisure, basically, at their schedule. It's available to them 24/7. So
So, Missy, since that is new, I mean, I think you need to share with the commission how long the Canvas at your own case has been available to to board members and also speak to what you offer through Zoom trainings every month.
Well, so for new members, we're talking, they have to get 10 hours of training. And they have had the ability to do that asynchronously on their own on the Canvas platform since October of 2022. Prior to that, they were doing it asynchronously on their own, just through PowerPoint presentations. But we understood that that was not as equitable as we would like it to be. We are going to be providing them in Spanish as well on Canvas. So they complete six of their required seven new member hours in Canvas, and then they meet for the last hour with me synchronously on Zoom. I offer multiple, multiple times a week for people to try to help fit their schedules so they can get that done. And then they can complete the other three hours, either through a school specific onboarding or any of the continuing training. Continuing members have to complete eight hours of training unless they have earned a fiscal exemption, which is earned by having three consecutive years with no material weaknesses, no significant findings, no repeat findings. And so continuing members, they have the option of our trainings either by Zoom. We we provide at least all eight hours every month. They also can do that on Canvas starting in January. We've already had a number of people complete the Canvas trainings. They can also do PCS and M, all of their business managers, all of their lawyers, you know. So there's a lot of options for training to be done. I basically just asked them, you know, if you've had professional training, let me know. If NIPSA trains you, if if Palms and Associates trains you, let me know.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Burt?
Thanks. Yeah, I just remember when we talked about this, it was really trying to. I mean, when when you're recruiting for really high value qualified board members, not all of them, you know, have like it's it's I think it's just trying to be more inclusive of people who might have very demanding like jobs still or our parents, like you want parents who have jobs to be on boards. And so just trying to allow for more flexibility for people to join boards and serve on boards and balancing that with like, they need to know what they're doing. They need to go through trainings. So I mean, I would I'd be open to like making it like four months that they they need to have served for at least four months. That way, it's March, like the, you know, the least amount would be March, April, May, June. For folks who would join like at the end of a school year or end of a fiscal year. But it's just difficult for people who, I mean, you want to be to allow people who have experience, who have passion, who like have the skills and qualities that you want in a board member to have the flexibility of time to get these done as well. And you don't want to act like for me, I just wouldn't want to hinder like someone who's a prominent business person in the community who's like willing to serve. But if you're like, oh, well, you got to get this done like on your leisure time. And like, I know for me, my leisure time is not very much. Like, I don't get a lot of leisure time. So like, I know it doesn't seem like it's a ton of training, but it's for some board members, especially really possibly really, really great ones, it's it can be difficult to get it done, or it feels rushed, and it could make it be to where they end up not doing it. Or a school is not going to want them to be on it if they're not retired or they're not, they don't have kids. They don't have, you know, it kind of disqualifies some people who might want to be doing it and who have a lot of great expertise and and value to a board. So I think that's why the idea of isn't to like allow them like all this extended time. But it's also to try to be super inclusive of the various types of people who would be who who could be really valuable on a charter board. So I hear like, you know, that they do, it's maybe a lot to give at least six that they need to be on basically before. Well, I I mean, that's not totally true because I mean, they could come on in November and still serve. They just as long as they're on anytime before December for a fiscal year, then they need to have gotten their then their for then they're they count towards this. And if not, then they don't. But it is, I I just don't want to be exclusionary. Like, it's already difficult enough for people who are are working, who have kids, who, you know, to volunteer for positions outside of just the normal life duties. So just trying to make it more inclusionary for people like that as well.
Thank you all for your your feedback. I think just given our time, I think we should move on to the next.
All right, thank you. So the next one was governance and meeting transparency and document, I'm sorry, meeting transparency and documentation. The school provides an accurate board calendar. So this was brought up before the this calendar would be asked for. And for every meeting in which a quorum of a governing body is present, the school must publicly post a notification with agenda at least 72 hours prior to the meeting and publicly post posted draft copy of the minutes within 10 days after the meeting. This has been changed because per the legal review, it's a it's not a board approved a minutes, but the draft copy that needs to be 10 minutes after. So this gives the P the CSD access then to all the minutes, all the all the information and must be publicly out there. We did also with legal review, remove that sort of submission to CSD because that is not a legal requirement, the public posting is. But I think that there will need to be some, just to it's a really hard job to go track down all these things. So the there's got to be some way of making that a very easy process for CSD. Otherwise, then you risk getting a red because you can't find it. So there's almost the same of publicly posting and hiding it seven, seven layers in on your webpage could be seen as a red and 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 be unfortunate.
I just wanted to point out that we learned a couple of years ago now, I believe, when somebody from the Attorney General's Office came and spoke to the PEC that so the schools can publicly post their notification of agenda at least 72 hours if they have an up to date and posted Open Meetings Act statement that says that they will in general meet every, you know, whatever, third Tuesday or whatever it says. If they don't have an annual Open Meetings Act that's up to date, they need to post 10 days in advance, I believe is what it says. So I don't know if you want to make it legally more in line with what the OMA says or not, but that's I just wanted to.
Thank you. I mean, I think that this is where the accurate board calendar comes in, right? So that they so but that that might be a nice yellow to talk about the 10 days if they but at this point, we're trying to get everyone to actually have that publicly, like make that a requirement to have the calendar.
Well, the calendar and the OMA are different, but but I can see what you mean. Yes, I I can understand.
Other comments on this one? All right, so so again, we've removed this submission to CSD with but but that just puts the that doesn't remove the requirement. So whether it's going to CSD or not, I would, you know, I think it would be nice to have a yellow. My my thinking is if you're having, you know, monthly meetings and let's say one month you don't do it 72 hours ahead of time. Is there a way of not immediately going to red? Because right now it's binary, so there might be some sort of number game here.
I like yellow. And I don't think that there's a problem with the sea of yellow. And so definitely we can come up with some yellows that maybe get at parts of the OMA, like the statement that Missy mentioned. And then I really love that we are having schools post things on their website because that helps with everybody.
Yeah, my question was just a publicly posted draft copy of the minutes. I I know the statute says approved. So then we put the draft copy on there and then after the meetings approved after the 30 days, then we take that one off and we put the new one on. Okay, I think that just needs to be.
Sorry, I think that is, yeah, and I would ask that your lawyer review that because this was replaced because this is what the the PEC's lawyer suggested we put in. So I would like to to verify what version needs to be on and how and when.
Yeah, I I've always done the the approved minutes, not the draft minutes because those can be changed and they haven't been approved.
I agree. I think that's I think that's so that's an additional step that I just know that like you got to talk to the person. And I know that we have people at our schools that work really hard, but having the person who is in charge of the website upload to put that up and then put the draft up and then take the other one down. It's just it just adds to 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 messiness that doesn't need to be there when we just, after the next meeting, you approve the minutes, you put those suckers up. It just seems like that makes more sense. But we can follow up Julie on that, too.
I I think the language in OMA says that within 10 days, they have to be made available. So we could request, and in fact, as we are doing the site visits, and we wondered what the most recent board meeting had, I did ask for some draft minutes that they should have available on request. But I hear you. I agree with the idea of posting the approved minutes and making sure that boards are approving the previous meeting minutes at their subsequent meeting.
Because I think it can, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I think it can cause confusion if there's if there's something wrong in the draft minutes, and then that's public. Your oversight while the OMA is here, your oversight needs to be over what's important.
When do you all review this? Do you do this during the site visit? Is it something that's separate when you, you know, when you when you go in? Look at, you know, I remember back in the day, it was, let's look at the binder of agendas and the minutes. And we also look on the website, but what's the process for you all to kind of clarify these things?
So our current performance framework doesn't really specify anything around this. So I personally love board minutes, and every time I go to a school and every chance I have, I read the minutes. But we don't have a system. This is going to allow us to create a systematic way of looking at board minutes. I I think that they help provide a lot of information about the school. And the the one question I had recently, and this came out of a site visit that we had a couple of weeks ago, was that the school didn't have the meeting materials all in one place. And so I don't know. I know how PEC manages that, and I think we do a great job of of getting meeting materials posted as well. But I don't know what the PEC thinks about meeting materials, maybe upon request also.
Yeah, I I'm not, because I think OMA requires the posting of the meeting materials as well. I mean, I know we do. I know it's a challenge for schools. I would I so I would only say that if if OMA doesn't fact require that meeting materials be posted, that we do that. If OMA does not, I mean, I don't, I don't remember if we do it because it's an OMA requirement or if we just feel it's a, you know, it should be publicly available, so we're going to do it. If OMA requires it, then I think we should require it. But if OMA doesn't require it, then I say, let's just make it available. If someone has a question, they can contact the school and get whatever it was.
Yeah, and I and I I don't recall it. We're checking OMA guidance right now. I I think actually it's more like having public records available.
Right, right.
So one thing, Wayne, since you have been so patiently sitting here, I'm wondering also if you can help us with yellow? So if there are things that the schools think that would be that would be a help to think through, since it was a request from many of the schools? And not just on this indicator, but any and and send them, yeah. So the next is another governance one, oversight of the school's head administrators. So we wanted to make sure that the that that the board is ensuring that the school's administrator is annually evaluated. There's a lot of things, as we heard earlier, that that the board is responsible for doing and to elevate one over another. You know, there there's a there's a ton. It is one I say, you know, at what this is why there are seven different oversight ones versus the, you know, the academic. And so I I do just kind of present that there is a lot now under governance. And is this one and is this one a super important one?
Um, I have ideas for yellow.
Okay.
Um, so and maybe this is Um, so um and maybe this is in the time, maybe it overlaps with the timeliness and we don't want to necessarily ding twice, but sometimes there is not notification of the change of the head administrator um in a timely way. And then also, I think a lot of times, so I I like that we are asking for demonstrations by looking at board minutes. It doesn't really um green demonstrate annual evaluation. Doesn't specify how, but uh what we're finding is that a lot of boards say they have a head administrator evaluation process policy, but they're behind in actually implementing. And and I think the key here is that the boards are are evaluating the head administrator in order to make an informed decision based on performance the following year, but I I I see Wayne smiling like he has something to say about this.
Well, I can tell you, Missy does an amazing job of training these governing council members, and I do think they appreciate and value uh your trainings. Uh, and also they started um evaluating me twice a year and it makes it it makes it very difficult for them to do that, but I I do think that that's important. I'm not saying that maybe green is they get evaluated twice a year and yellow is they they are evaluated annually. I but I do think it is for uh and so much turnover is going on with um directors right now, superintendents in the state that um, I don't know, I don't want to create any more problems or make it any more complicated.
Commissioner Gibson.
So, you know, um, you're twisted between here because I think it's really, it it absolutely is imperative that schools do the evaluation. But I'm wondering if when we're looking at that requirement for the for them submitting a calendar, they have it on their calendar. This is when we're going to do the evaluation, whether it's once a year or twice a year, but that it's calendared. So to us, that's the thing should be the acknowledgement that they've got it. Um, the notification piece I'm struggling with it. Can we incorporate that in? Is there someplace else we can incorporate that notification with other notifications that they've done in a timely fashion? Because we're singling that out, and then if we've got notifications, why can't we just roll that into? They didn't notify us of, you know, whatever it was, but if there's a calendar that the Governance Council has created, then they know that they've got to do this um evaluation.
So I I I pulled up this one and I don't know the answer to this, Director Chavez, but when you do a legal requirements and annual compliance, could could the evaluation of the school administration be a subsection under here as one of the things that they have to do and that you're checking for versus having it as a separate level that is just, you know, again, it it's it's the waiting piece of how are you, you know, what is the commission looking at? When and I'm not diminishing that this is important, but we've elevated it as as strongly as performance on the on the state framework.
Okay, so um I think that the difference um between the evaluation of the head administrator and the legal compliance is that I think that the legal compliance needs to be aligned with what's in statute rule
Yes.
and specific guidance that the P E D has put out. And there isn't something about evaluating the head administrator. And because it's its own indicator, I think it belongs here. Now, there are some P E C policies that are about amendments and um requests that um the schools are supposed to submit for notifying us of changes in governance and other items that are time bound. And so timeliness on that um could come in to play. But I think um that this is unique and specific to oversight of the school's head administrator. Maybe it is binary. I don't I don't know. I I to me, it seems like, do they have a plan and do they follow it is green? And um yellow might be, they have a plan in place, but um they're working to implement it and red is they just aren't doing it.
I would say like, and e- everyone can say this, you can poop me on this, but I I struggle with the creating some yellows for some of these, just because I'm not just not sure, like if it's necessary. I can be pushed on that. Um, but it's either like you either did this or you didn't do the evaluation and you didn't notify or you did notify. Um, and so I just wonder, well, what's the middle ground? And I get that we can create something, but I I don't know if that's going to add value to either the school um gauging their own success as well as uh the P E C being able to gauge the success of our schools. Um, I think it feels good in some ways to have yellows where it's like, well, we kind of like, you know, we're but we're working towards something because we have that teacher focus. But a lot of these and and the organizational framework for me are a little bit more like you either did or you didn't. And I and so I I I struggle a little bit to try to invent something where maybe we don't need to be murky and maybe we can just be like um like pretty clear on what whether this happened or didn't. Um, anyhow, just this is something I'm I've been struggling with a little bit over, you know, through the last couple of these.
Yes, we have an evaluation, but no.
Well, i- in this case, they could have had an evaluation but not notified or vice versa. So there are there this because because there are two parts to it. Um, before and and I see Commissioner Beck has his hand raised, but before that, uh, Karina, you said something that this is not in statute and that's why you can't put it under here. I believe it. I mean, if it's not in statute, then I question your legal, you know, ability to put it in a framework. I would think it's.
Well, but I thought that what we were doing was adding quality indicators and we thought.
This is not a deliverable. I mean, I would say this is this is another comply, you know, this is more of a compliance than, you know, i- if you're trying to get a like a moving away from compliance into a more outcome based framework with the emphasis on academics, I'm just like, I keep wanting to look back on that, like we tilted the scales but accidentally in that last meeting to to put academics here instead of here. And so I just want to make sure we're we're good.
Commissioner Beck, then Commissioner Gibson.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say, I I agree with you, Chair, uh, that and some of these um not only in the organizational framework, but also in the financial framework. Some of these um we're almost trying to fit three into two. Uh, you know, they either do it or they don't. Um, either you're the in compliance or they're not. So some of these, of most of these, I think we're fine with, you know, you put in, we haven't gotten her yet um with the good standing and a few others, you have put yellow. But I don't think a lot of these lend themselves uh to being partially okay. So I'm, I kind of agree with you a lot on those.
Commissioner Gibson.
So I guess I'm standing mostly alone and needing to get rid of this. Socks on all of you. Um, so uh, but uh I I can't see a yellow. My concern with this is looking at it, that we're trying to drive control over what that evaluation is looking at and we don't have any authority. I mean, we've all had those head administrators up in front of us that you want to hold up the sign. You know, this is not working for you. We but we can't. So I I get concerned that this is going to go down that road that we don't want to go down. Yes, you know, I had a very good friend who sat on a Governance Council who was shocked when I told her they had to do an evaluation. But I think we've moved away from that. I think we we can incorporate this someplace in other areas to make sure they're doing it and not, um, you know, we can't look at how well they're doing it. We that's not our authority.
Um, just to update you, it is in rule, but not in statute.
Commissioner Ingham.
Okay, I'm sorry, I am ignorant here. Um, but um we're requiring an evaluation, but just like you said, we're not telling them what that about uh what that evaluation is going to look like. I'm not understanding how that is of any value, to be brutally honest with you. If you're just asking a head administrator, is everything good? He says it's good, we're done. Okay, so is that really how nebulous it is? Well, then what value is that? I'm sorry, I I don't I don't understand. I mean.
Coming on my team.
I I think so. I I well, I I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
I mean, an evaluation, uh, when principals have to evaluate teachers, they have some specific criteria they have to use to do that evaluation. The board doesn't, I mean, I'm not hearing any criteria that we're evaluating that administrator by. So to me, if it's that vague, it has no value. And and so I I'm just, I don't understand. I said, I'm just saying that I I'm I'm clueless, sorry.
You know, Commissioner Ingham, that that was a very non-clueless thing to say. I think that's something that is really important to bring up. I I think that was provocative for sure. Yeah, Commissioner Gibson, then Director.
I just wanted, you're you're absolutely right. Um, there are many tools that can be used by school, by governance councils to create that tool to do a quality evaluation, but it is up to that Governance Council to and Missy's training to guide schools into what is. And and I know from from personal experience, our traditional public school gladly um partnered with charters because they had the infrastructure to help create those tools. They helped mentor some of our charter schools that struggle to, you know, to work through and create that tool. But it's up to, it's the quality of the Governance Council to create the quality of that tool. They could just say, how how are things going, Stuart? Great. They could. And it's not up for us. We don't have any authority to say that is a significantly poor tool. We don't.
Yeah, I was just going to say that it's kind of, in my mind, it's a best practices thing that a school would tailor its head administrator evaluation process. If I were on the board, I would want to add, like, what is the school's annual goals, missions, you know, and and hold head administrators accountable, not just for the performance framework, but how well the school is implementing, how well the the school is implementing its promise. You're right.
But I I think that, so I want to, I want to go back to the comments that were made earlier around why are we creating yellow? Because I want to remind us of the way that we came up with our overall evaluation, which Commissioner Beck brought up. We we had this expedited renewal and this renewal with without conditions and the renewal with conditions. And it was contingent on this working to meet in these sections of the framework where we only have two working to meets right now. Um, like academic all have working to meet, but then we went to this binary place. So we we either need to change what it means to when for for these criteria or we need to add working to meet here so that it's a meaningful distinction between an expedited renewal and a renewal without conditions because that working to meet is the only thing we've identified as really the difference. I also just want to once again show the way the framework is right now with six, seven and four. I I hear the desire for using this framework to create best practice, but the goal of this framework is to measure the schools on whether they're meeting their goals. And that's really what you're trying to do. So you you want to balance that. There are other tools you have and other levers which get to other parts of the school, but this is about, are they yeah, th- there are so many best practices that we could have a seventeen, you know, more things to put.
Is the goal to have working to meet or yellow in each of those categories for organizational and financial where they don't exist? Is that is that what I'm hearing? Like, we ought to do that or is that just from feedback that we've received?
It's feedback that we received. People wanted this. They wanted to have uh a an opportunity that that a lot of public comment was around having the opportunity to show that they were, that it wasn't just immediately and does not meet. Um, I think we, you know, I I I caution, of course, against creating a pretend, you know, a forcing, as you said, a third when there really is only two, so I don't think we need it in everything. Um, I would say, you know, to to have it in half or three quarters would give you a real distinction between uh top tier and middle tier. Right, but but you if you get a working to meet in academics, you don't get a pass. Since we created a bar even higher for academics. I think, you know, what what I heard pretty consistently from the working group is they wanted this framework to weigh heavily academics and allow for schools to um have, you know, a be trying hard on the organizational finance, but not necessarily always top notch. And what we created was you have to be top notch because we didn't create that middle layer. We just, we made a binary and I I just think we probably to keep in the spirit need to add in. Sort of the the middle. Okay. Um, so I'm going to, whoops, go back. Um, this is the academic. All right, for board membership. So we ma- I I don't know that we made a decision about this, but I think if there were an indicator, this could be one that goes. And then we have equitable enrollment process. Um, and this is, you know, that that the school is following the policy inconsistent with the lottery. This may be one that's binary. You're either doing it or you're not. Um. And this, we actually got some public comment, how important it is to ensure that schools are open, you know, public schools to all kids. Don't think there was any pushback on the indicator itself. Questions or thoughts about this one? All right, then compliance with legal requirements. So this is, this one we did have a lot saying, I don't know what this list is. What is this? This is new. Um, this is a lot. So I I wonder, Karina, if you want to talk a little bit about the vision behind this particular measure.
Yeah, so there's many legal compliance in um areas that charter schools and districts must follow. And one of the ways that it sort of drives home is when we open up new schools and they have what we call the implementation year checklist, which is a comprehensive list of all of the policies that the school must have and all of the things that it must do in order to be in compliance with all things P E D. Um, and so I noticed that the newer schools have all those things in place. The older schools tend to not have all these things in place. And what this does is it allows us to uh make sure that all schools are up to date on requirements which change every year. So we didn't want to embed what the compliance indicators are into the performance framework because right now the legislature is debating some things that will surely pass into law and affect charter schools, right? Um, so for example, um, there is a recent change to um the the need for schools to have a compliance around the Black Education Act and and to put some things on their website and et cetera, et cetera. So what the goal is for this one is for it to be annually updated. Um, and it also um allows us to then um focus on the new things each year, right? And 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 I'm talking about the 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 site visits not just being about compliance, but also technical assistance. And so we're finding that sometimes when a school is out of compliance with some of the items on that are that are required, sitting down with them, walking them through what they need to do to become in compliance, putting them in contact with the person at the P E D and then allowing them to become compliant before the end of the year. Here's where um, you know, you have time to get it together and and become compliant. I think um that's the vision for this one.
Karina, uh, I just wanted to add that, oh, well, I think for years now, like three years, that we've been asking for a a complete list of all of these compliances that we need because all the schools would just appreciate that. And we could go someplace, we have a complete list of what is required. And e- especially like on trainings, these trainings come up, uh, they get passed into legislation. Schools have no. Schools have no idea, and this really happened during COVID Title IX, for instance. That was big, that, that huge change happened in Title IX, and most schools really didn't even know anything about it. So if there was a list that schools could go to, to find out what is, because I can tell you right now, I don't think there would be one school that in compliance with all requirements.
Exactly. And I would say there is no complete list, but the closest thing to it is what we have in our, um, implementation year checklist. So we're starting with that where it cites all of the places in statute and rule that schools need to be compliant in order to open up their doors. We're starting with that. And I think every year we're going to have to revisit and update it. But, um, I don't know, Missy is Title IX in the IY checklist. I know that I learn something new all the time. So I don't know that we're ever going to have a complete thing, but the vision is that every year we publish what we know. And that's what schools look at at the beginning of the year. And then when we do the site visit, you know, we can check. And if they need technical assistance during the visit, we provide that. And by the end of the year, they make whatever corrections are needed.
We used to, um, approve the site visit checklist every year. So, and I, and I know that's not entirely complete because I know it's difficult. But I think that's, you know, at least that starting point, um, for schools. I hesitate to put it in here. Only because it, you know, it's constantly moving. Um, so, and then you've got, you know, guidance that comes out because of a public health order or whatever. And, um, we're not just going to keep going back and revising that. But, but I do agree that I think there needs to be a warehouse of the best that someone can come up with that list. So schools have, you know, a, a fair understanding of what that is. Um, so I'll close with, um, two words, epicenter. And I'll leave it at that.
So I would say that's the, the, what you brought up is the intent of this. So after legislative session is complete up through June first, um, you know, it's sort of May, that this, this, this ESD would develop that list of the compliance that they can, will have to do for the schools, that schools need to comply, that that would be publicly available and you would know, and you would have a timeline on when things are due, when they'll be checked. And that it is, the reason it says public discussion, it's not necessarily a vote. They can't not hold the school compliant with, with, you know, they can't say we're going to not hold you compliant with some law, but having a public discussion forces that you will know. Um, so it can't just be, you know, it, it can't be late. It, it requires, um, and I did talk to your, your, Julia wasn't necessarily in favor of that, but I said, I really think it's important to be fair to schools that there is a public discussion by PEC in June so that you know what that next year might look like. I think what we'd be careful is if something pops up that they forgot to put on that list, you know, that becomes something of question on whether you can be held compliant. I mean, yes, it's the law you have to, but whether that would go in the framework, um, probably not. And I wonder if there are ways of doing desk audits as well, so that's not all done at the site visit, but rather there's some sort of desk audit ahead of time in the site visits reserved for the technical assistance versus a, um, compliance audit.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think Wayne, what this one will do is, um, require us to collect more school policies um, and, and processes, um, as, as evidence of compliance with, with all of these things. I, I think we had not been systematically collecting all school policies and, and boards sometimes to, to, you know, let's be real, um, when we do check in on governing boards, some boards are very active in keeping their policies up to date. Some haven't adopted a new policy in three years. So I think this is going to increase expectation for boards to be, um, aware of what they need to be thinking about and putting into policy and then passing that policy and maybe amending other policies that are affected by changes in what is required in statute and rule.
So can I make a recommendation? This is where a yellow would make sense. Because, uh, I'll give you an example. I scheduled Title IX training three times for my staff, which is required. Is it the whole, I mean, if you haven't seen the new Title IX law, you know, it was first federal, then the state adopted it, and now all districts, all schools have to adopt this. There were some issues, uh, and Title IX trainer came through Palms. And, um, we had to put it off three months. Then three months came, and then that person had a family emergency. And then we had to put it off until the end of the year because we don't have in-service days every month. And this Title IX training was, uh, four hours long. So you could, CSD may have came and done their site visit and said, well, what are you doing? Are you, are you going to get this Title IX training? Yes, we have made, we have made the date for it. We're working on it. And when we have our, our training scheduled, you know, May 20th or whatever. And that's exactly what happened last year to, to the school, that the training had to go in our, because we have five days of in-service at the end of the year, or two days at the end of the year.
I, I have, um, we, so I can say from when I was the authorizer, we, we had, you know, the, the timeliness was one of the things that would, would not, you know, we never wanted to, um, go too heavy on this sort of thing. So we had a lot of room for schools because it is hard to be in compliance with, with things, you know. There are some that might rise, like having a certificate of occupancy, that's accurate because that's health and safety of kids. So there may be, you know, I think we talked before about significant, there may be a different, you know, some where there's more leniency, and then there's some, a brand new act, and then, and then PED hasn't created all the trainings yet, and you may, you know, be way down their schedule. So. All right. Yeah.
Not knowing, you asked for a list. How big would that list be? I mean, is, is it, is it the, uh, is it like the IRS code? I mean, what, what are we talking? Uh, i- i- if, if it is, and nothing ever goes away, none of those regulations ever go away, they just add to constantly. I can understand why schools would have a difficult time maintaining that compliance. And, um, I don't know what the answer to this is, but it, the, just adding more on top of more and not really ever having a complete list that you can deal with. And even if you had a complete list, it's so long that i- i- unless you're, unless you're full-time compliance person, you, you'll, you'll miss something for sure. And I just don't, I, I don't have an answer to this. I'm just saying, this seems ridiculous. I'm sorry.
So it's, so there, my organization, uh, the other half of it does do a lot of, has a tool that looks at this. I would say most, usually the list is around forty, and that includes financial and operational compliance. It's not an exhaustive list of five hundred items. A, B, that list is something you are going to publicly discuss. The schools know it. It's going to be out there in the public by June first. That's what we're, we're committing you to do that so that they're not caught off guard on September first with a new list of things that they didn't know they had to do and prepare for, giving you, hopefully the schools, two months to three months to get ready. Whether that means new policies need to be put into place that incorporate Title IX or other new things. So that, that's, that is going to be your job to help notify the schools. Here's the list that we, that, that's coming up. And, and, and Karina and her staff's job to make sure that list is ready. Um, I'd say when I had this job, our goal was every time we added one thing on, we had to try and take something away. So we tried to keep it at, at around forty. Um, health and safety in the last five to 10 years has become a huge piece and, and, and something that as a commission, I would want to make sure that our schools are following because health and safety is, is critical, um, to kids. But go ahead, Karina.
So a couple of things on this one is that I do think that comprehensive list is important. I would say maybe we might consider publishing it on or before July one, um, just to give us enough time to compile what was actually passed and to have conversations um, within PED if we need to about the requirements. Um, that way, you know, they start out the school year and the fiscal year with the comprehensive list. I also think that I, you know, I'm just going to be honest here. I don't know that we're going to be able to review every single item at every single school every single year. Um, and so I think maybe a focus on the ones that are, um, called to our attention because we get a lot of complaints about schools, some that are valid or some that are not, but some that warrant the question of what's the school's policy? Is the school following its policy? Um, and or maybe, um, it's a new requirement that schools might not be aware. To me, that would be the, the best part about this is that, you know, if the legislature passed something, well, I mean, if you're a school leader, you may or may not be watching what the legislature is doing and what the governor, uh, signs in as a bill. But, you know, that comes to us and so that we present it to you as part of this. But I do think that, uh, it's going to be lengthy.
So sometime, and this is, I would think back to the three-legged stool, stool, Karina. At times, it's not your responsibility to oversee. Sometimes it's the board chair. And with all the training that you're doing, so you'll have assurances from the board chair that they're, take for example, often in states, as you know, you're, you're meeting the, the fire safety code and you're running your, you know, seven or five fire drills per year. Um, when that came up, I'm not a fire marshal and I had no idea how to, to do that. And I was not going to take the responsibility of ensuring that schools were doing those. So the board chair had to sign off an assurance that the school was doing the fire drills as, and being compliant. So those would be things that you'll want to consider. And it puts an onus on the schools, sort of the way Missy was talking earlier, that they are doing their job in that, uh, to ensure this health and safety of kids.
I appreciate that. And I think that, um, the other thing is that as the Charter Schools Division, we collaborate with other, um, entities within the PED who have oversight responsibilities for those things. And again, I really see this as, as an opportunity for technical assistance, not just dinging a school. Because I think that, um, you know, in the past couple of weeks, I sat down with school leaders and walked through some of these things with the appropriate people at the PED. And everybody was learning.
It is four forty, and I'm very excited to say this is our last performance area. Um, you guys are troopers. Um, so we're going to look at this. I want to start by saying, it says good standing, um, under legal review, Julia recommended that we not use the word good standing because that has legal connotations, uh, uh, in a different way. So we might want to reframe this. And this is, um, you know, so one of the concerns was that, you know, when you're in yellow, you can't go from yellow back to green. And, and I thought about this for a while. The school has identified its intervention, um, to good, as, for an intervention to good standing. And I think the schools want to say like, and and then they could go back to green somehow. I, I, so I think we need to, there's some language here. I think we retired when we did it as well, that we clean this up and make sure. Or this may be one that we just don't include because good standing is covered. You know, through, you, you will be outside this framework able to, um, identify schools as we've talked about through your oversight processes and that you already have a process in place where PED notices when schools not in a good standing. So maybe, maybe we, we kind of did overreach on this one and we can pull it back.
So I, the intervention ladder is, is I believe still going to be incorporated into the contract, correct? That's, you know, and I know the contract is, is because we're, you know, we've got so many wheels going at the same time. But if the intervention ladder is incorporated into the contract, then it doesn't need to sit here because it, it's going to reside in the contract. And, um, you know, the school will be dealt with through the intervention ladder. And those consequences will come, which is kind of outside of this performance framework. So to me, it, it could, if it's, if it's residing in the contract, this could be a double ding that, you know, and, and why, you know, it's, if you're in good standing, it doesn't matter. But it's those schools that are certainly in the yellow and red, it could have real, you know, significant consequences too. So if it's going to reside in the contract, I say pull it out.
Commissioner, I was thinking that exact same thing. What, what would be the value of having it here plus being in the, in the contract? Or there is that, you know, there is the intervention ladder that we can utilize to support all the other things that are in here that, that are relevant and important, uh, in terms of lifting up as best practices for our charters. And so, so, and, and unless there is like, I mean, I'd love to hear a counter uh, thought from this for sure. But I do feel like this is, uh, and I, and I, I think it speaks to me to the, the one, the area, like, how do you get from, you know, if we really are thinking about schools, like school improvement, like how you, you know, if you got off the, if you did something naughty and you did the process, you went on to a corrective action plan, and now you figured it out, like, is there a reason why you would still be in yellow versus in, you know, being okay on this? And on the intervention ladder, we would like, you know, take, you know, take your, take your foot off your throat, you know, at that stage. Uh, and, and so I just, I wonder, I, so I, I think that's what was convincing me that maybe this is not necessarily um, a required component of our, of our framework.
Because the letter that goes out says you're now in good standing. So if that's the case, why wouldn't I be green? You know, so that it's, um, you know, it's kind of counter what the letter would come from the PEC that, you know, yes, you've satisfied this. Congratulations. You're now back to good standing. So it's kind of like a clean slate. But it's not, if it sits here, your slate is never cleaned during that contract year.
But I will say, if we take this one out, we have to come up with an, an additional yellow and the other ones. So I have to, Commissioner Rebecca and I have to like fall on our sword on that piece, uh, to come up with some other yellows at some point. So. Karina, I see you, see you.
So the current draft contract that I'm looking at and that will be discussed at some point in the next couple of days mentions the intervention ladder, but then references NMRA, I think that's supposed to be NMAC, um, and the proposed rule that, um, would contain the intervention ladder. I personally, and I love, um, Wayne's thoughts on this, like for it to be either embedded into the contract itself. Um, and I, I think that the way that we, um, we don't have an indicator that says this currently, but I know that we're looking at, um, other indicators and did the school get on a corrective action plan? And although a school can be released of that burden of having to come to the PEC and report out every month or every other month about how well they're implementing their corrective action plan, the very fact that the school went into corrective action, in my mind, makes them yellow.
So I guess I'm wondering if any other commissioners have thoughts about whether this is necessary, um, given given the fact that it's going into the contract. Well, if it, it sounded like it, their plan is, so maybe we need to discuss with Julia about how this is supposed to be handled.
Because I'm going to, uh, I'm just going to add, this does not outline what the intervention ladder is.
No.
So that's why the intervention ladder has to sit someplace else. Otherwise it doesn't exist because this doesn't create the intervention ladder. This just speaks of the intervention ladder. So it has to be someplace else in order for it to exist. So there's, I see no reason for it being here because it will have to sit someplace else for it to exist because this doesn't create it.
Yeah, for sure. Commissioner Beck?
Yeah, I agree with both of you guys. If it, if the intervention ladder is, lies somewhere in the contract, we don't really need to have this here. But to your point, Chair, um, when I read the overall evaluation, uh, we really do need to put in some more yellows and we need to find them someplace. So that we don't ding, you know, the schools out of the potential to be in the green. Um, I think that's pretty important for sure.
So you two create a subcommittee.
So, well, I So, well, I'm actually going to suggest, I'm going to repeat that Wayne, we put a little on, on the schools to help us come up with the yellows. I think, you know, if, it will provide, you know, a good framework is done in collaboration with the schools. So tomorrow, no. No, I, I, I know there's a timeline that we have to work with and I'll work with the director on.
Yeah, and it's pretty tight. So we can talk later on if you have ideas and if the field has told you some things that would be helpful here.
Yeah. It is, it's really nice. I want to just underscore how impressed I am with, with, with both the director and P E C on, on getting public comment. You know, you don't want to create a framework in isolation. And I also want to just commend you for doing all the listening sessions and getting the, the comments in. And it's very, very helpful. And if we didn't address something that was a comment that you think we just misunderstood or went through, I, I, please let, let me know or let the director know so we can address it.
So the only comment I'm, is, this was asked over and over again by several different directors, is to see our framework that we're currently using and compare it to this new framework and see what the difference is and be able to just go back and forth and see, why is this new framework even being proposed? I, I guess just having that understanding and, and right now, many of the directors and myself included, I understand that things have to be modified and changed over time, but it seems like, but I'm not sure if this is drastic, drastically being changed or not, because I don't have something to compare it to.
So a piece of me wants to say, well, you do, because you have your current contract. So you do have that comparison. So, but I'm going to say, the driving force for doing this was over and over, when we were doing renewals, schools were saying, you're not capturing what we are. So that that was the driving force here to try to show that the innovation and the uniqueness, not just, you know, we acknowledge and believe that growth is important, but there's other asp, there's so, so much of a student's growth in a charter school is also as a direct result of the other intangible things that, you know, we're missing in the, in the stories of the, the schools. And that's what schools kept coming up and saying, you know, it's not just that black and white. Here we are. And it becomes difficult when you're then making a public vote, when you don't, when it's not captured somewhere. So this hopefully moves us in that direction, so that we can be, we're acknowledging publicly that innovation that's, that's occurring in the schools and the uniqueness of our schools, which hopefully publicly helps to tell the story of why charters are important here in New Mexico.
Very well explained. I, I, I like that, that, and you said the word uniqueness. Again, that's, that's so important in our schools. And I know we have some new charter schools, you know, applied and we're looking at, you know, you guys are going to be looking at those very soon and looking at their unique, how they're going to be unique in their communities. So turning it back and I can, I can, because I will be talking to the directors here shortly and letting them know that this is a positive thing. This is a positive change, like you said. And that's, that's what we, that's what I have to do and Matt has to do is, is let them know that this is for the good of the school and for the good of the kids, instead of just a bunch of paperwork we have to do.
I mean, I think for, at least I can speak for myself, because I've been on here the longest and went through, you know, some of the iterations that I certainly didn't like, because I think it, you know, it was really very, very compliance and state accountability focused. And that's not what, you know, our schools were created to fill in those gaps that the traditional schools aren't. So it makes sense that the state accountability probably isn't going to fit them as well. So show us, and I don't think the old, the old performance frameworks did that job, but that's what unfortunately the majority of the commission wanted. So I, there's been too many, I agree, there's been too many changes, but it took that to get us to here. And it's unfortunate that, you know, schools face, you know, suffer through that, through those changes with us, because it's like, oh, one more change. But I really believe that this is a change that's going to, and that's why we're doing the rulemaking, so that these, this gets cemented and it, it's not going to hopefully change for a very long time.
All right, and I'm just going to make sure I heard everything correctly, that we would remove three A four, Oversight of Schools Head Administrator, and three C two, good standing, creating under organizational now. I think it's going to be five and financial four and academic six.
All right. If there's nothing else, Naomi, thank you so much for your time. Are you heading back tonight or tomorrow?
No, I have, I'm going to go out for dinner tonight and enjoy the snow.
Gotcha. Wonderful. Enjoy Santa Fe and New Mexico and really appreciate you coming out today with us and, and swinging with the punches with the, the, the weather. And thank you all for being here also, both in person and virtual. It's good to have you all here, for sure. And so commissioners, before we adjourn, I just wanted to remind you all about the team building activity tomorrow. So think about the artifact or item that is significant to you, that you want to share, five or seven or so minutes tomorrow as one way for us to start to get to know one another. Thank you all, and let's go ahead and adjourn.